Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Copell City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into work session in the first-floor conference room. The public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you very much. We'll try knocking on the table. Mike was gonna go get it. Good afternoon. The time is 5:31 PM. The clock outside is wrong. The time's 5:31. We're gonna begin the work session. We have five items. The first one is discussion of the agenda items. Anybody have any questions or comments? We're gonna be doing something a little different toward the end of the agenda. There are several of the items that are gonna be heard together. So we're gonna take, I believe, is 13 and 14. No, no, sorry. 11 and 12 and 13 together. And then we'll talk about 14 and 15 together. So we'll do those as a single motion in a civil public hearing. Kevin?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about Agenda Item 11.
Yes, sir.
All right. Just specifically, I wanted to talk about, just kind of publicly. So part of this agenda item is creating an ordinance specifically addressing carports.
All right. So you're right, yeah. It's breaking out the carports into its own section.
Yes. So, you know, completely agree that, you know, we have carports in town, so that makes sense.
Sorry.
So I just wanted to kind of, just kind of discuss the biggest differences between what our current ordinance says about carports. And I know we're separating it up into new ones. So like, current setbacks for, you know, accessory structures that might include a carport and stuff like that. What does that look like now versus what we're changing it to?
Okay.
Or proposed to?
So currently, the rear yard setback is 20 feet. And we're changing that to five, which is less restrictive. The side yard setback, we've got five different scenarios, I guess. Where you have the side yard setback, and there's four of them that are less restrictive. One, two, or three of them that are less restrictive. And then two of them are the same requirement.
And that was per the presentation last month at our last meeting, kind of went through those scenarios, correct?
Yes, sir. A couple of changes that we've made since the last presentation. The last presentation, we had rear alley access only. And we've updated that to include side alley access. And then where the situation where they're not accessed off of an alley, then side and rear access from the front.
Got it. Excellent. And then I guess, just kind of curious, and if you don't know this, that's completely fine. But what specifically is the motivation for, you know, breaking out the carports by themselves versus, you know, having them part of other accessory structures? What was the?
It's just to make it easier to read for the residents.
All right, excellent. And then what was the thought behind the, obviously, breaking it out makes sense because we have carports. But the changes, if you will, like the setback changes, you know, from the rear access, you know, like from 20 to 5. What's the, just the thought process behind that? Just the?
So right now, it is prohibitive in most instances for someone to have a carport with that 20-foot setback. So we were looking to make it less restrictive. And then in addition to the Sherwood Park PD, where you guys granted a zero-foot rear yard setback.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That's all I had on that. Thank you.
Jim?
Real quick question, Matt, while you're up there. So when this is approved for Sherwood, just because they had so many that were already there ostensibly before there was even an ordinance of any kind, and there was a lot of grandfathering and that sort of thing. Are we compelled now to open it up to the rest of the city?
No. No, that's a planned development district, so that doesn't set a precedence.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Those are good questions to ask up there as well.
Absolutely.
Anybody have anybody, anything else? All right. Let's move on to Item B, which is the discussion regarding the proposed Veterans Memorial. This was requested by Councilmember Carroll. So, Don?
I get to go first?
You do.
So after we had our walkthrough the other day, and we got to see some of the designs, I got to thinking, what needs to be, how do we need to move forward? How do we need to actually move to actually getting the design in place and get construction put into, approved and put into place? And so I had, real quick, four points I want to sort of talk about. We had a task force that looked at what the, to give us recommendations, to give us parameters. I think the task force has done a great job coming up with things. You know, it was made up primarily of veterans. And they did a great job coming together and figuring out what the memorial or the plaza or the park, what it should have and what it shouldn't have, right? So they gave us great parameters. At this point, I think, since they've done their job so well, I think their job really is completed at this point. So it's now upon us to take the next step forward and come up with where we want to go and what do we want to approve, approve for this. The original design was $350,000, so that was the original project cost. One of the things I think we need to consider, one of, my second point is, I think we need to remove that restriction from the project. Meaning, for one thing, I don't know if we can build with escalation prices. I'm not sure $350,000 is gonna be able to build even what they recommended, the original design. But beyond that, originally, that $350,000, quite frankly, I think we were thinking a little bit small. I think we had sort of a small vision initially when we even came up with that number. If I'm correct, I think the estimate for the $250,000 or $350,000 part came from, I think, there was a community in the area that had a similar memorial that was cost approximately that. But it was a relatively small memorial. As we've talked about before, after the designs came back and we saw how, how much more vision there was than what at least I had originally envisioned. I just think we should remove the cost restriction when the designers and staff go out and try to figure out what should the plaza or what should the park look like. So I think we should remove that cost restriction. When I say remove it, we can still put some kind of cap on it that, you know, if they got above, you know, a million and a half or something, they could come back to us and we can have more discussion. But I just would really like, I think the veterans part really deserves to be, has had big visions.
So you will always have the ability on the cost side, because we haven't even approved a budget for it yet.
That's true. But I think the designs that were, that were considered were with $350,000 in mind, or roughly $350,000.
But you will, you will always have the ability to veto an excessive budget for such an undertaking.
Yep, fair. And to give perspective, just on those parks, I mean, think about the other park, the other park projects we have. I mean, what are we spending? We're spending 440 on Fleet, 800-plus on Duck Pond, Moore Road, almost $2 million, 1.9 million. Magnolia Park, probably a couple million. MacArthur Park, probably is gonna be one and 3/4 million. So we're, we spend on parks like we, like this community, I mean, we have our parks because we spend money on them. So I think the veterans deserve a part that's, you know, has potentially a bigger price tag. So that, I think that restriction, we should allow staff to go find designs that exceed what we have originally thought. The last point I want to make is, if we move forward, if we tell staff to go and get more designs, my recommendation would be, and this is certainly up for all of us to discuss, I like it back behind Town Center. I tend to like the alternate design that use sort of the south, the southern part of that plaza and put the blade walls more out of the amphitheater up on the southern part. And so that would be my recommendation, is that we move to something that uses sort of the southern part.
When you refer to the southern part, you're talking that green space?
Yeah, right here in the front. Yeah, out of the amphitheater.
I think of, I think of that area as behind the Justice Center.
Okay, right. So I think that, that preserves the amphitheater. And I know it's not always activated now, but it preserves it to be activated for other events if that's what needs to happen. I really like the blade walls in this area because it ties, we got an elementary school, we got the library, we got the Justice Center, we have a fire station there, we have town, I mean, I think it sounds, it seems like an optimal place to have this type of memorial. And I think there's some expansion room if we were to, in the future, decide it needs to be expanded to other first responders or other, other entities. So my recommendation is we do it, tell staff to look at designs that are up in that, up in the southern part of the Town Center Plaza. So those are sort of my points. But more than anything, I think we are probably at a point where we just need to come up with telling staff to go, what needs to happen next to make this actually occur? Like, get a design in place and get it bid so we can approve a budget and move forward to get this done by hopefully next Veterans Day, a year from now. Not this year, but a year from now. Those are my thoughts.
Don?
So I'm gonna go ahead and follow up on what Don talked about. As far as, I think last time we talked, we said, let's go to get the focus group reconvened and then see what the, what they come back with, just to make sure that we gave everyone a chance to voice what they were thinking. Because I think they, some of them felt like they didn't have the opportunity or didn't get their voices heard. So that's number one. I'm not sure if that's been done already or not, but at the end of the day, we talked about how if they come back and they say, okay, let's just do it behind Town Center, that's, that's fine. So that's number one. Number two, cost. I agree with Don. I think that the new estimate is, what, $500,000 from 350 now? That's what the update is. So yes, for sure, we need to go in, if there was a restriction, I'm not sure if there was, but we need to go in, probably increase the budget as well. And then three, the location-wise, the walk we had, it gave me a new perspective. I do like the location, and I do like the way they presented it. I just wanted to make sure that was the ultimate, ultimate design that we want to go with. But, you know, unlike from what Don was saying, I don't like coming further away. Because I think Smith also mentioned about it being right behind school, and if there was an event, that could be distraction from kids running around as well. If we were to have it right behind the Town Center, yeah, there's always room to move further back. But I think it would be odd to move further forward if we set it up from the green space that, you know, initial point, starting point, and then move forward. Rather, I think that if we start it right behind the Town Center and move, you know, expand it back, that will make more sense to me. So I do like, again, that wall gave me a whole new perspective, and I do like the presentation, and I do like where it is. Don't get me wrong, I still think that the people that were voicing Andy Brown Park still need to be heard, given a chance to say what they need to say. I think that's a fair thing for all the veterans, especially those that were voicing for that location as well. But at the end of the day, I think the budget, budget being increased, it's gonna have to be increased regardless. Because it's now estimated at $400,000.
Or more.
Or more.
Guys, it's up to you. How do you want to move forward? It's a fair point, we do need to move forward. Kevin?
Can I steal your cheat sheet, just so I can?
You're not supposed to tell everybody.
You have a cheat sheet. It's just, it's a pulpit. Okay. So Donna, I just want to say thank you for kind of stepping up and, you know, kind of leading this discussion. Because I think it's important that we do make a decision. You know, I really enjoyed the fact that we did get to, you know, come out to the plaza and have an opportunity to meet with some of the task force members and get a chance to walk the grounds ourselves. And it definitely gave some more perspective and it gives more thought about how we kind of activate that area. I do agree that it needs to be behind Town Center. Just, you know, John, I know you were, you know, you were talking about the, you know, the veterans who were, you know, favored in Andy Brown. But I think that if we think about what council is supposed to do is, is, you know, when we send the task force out, you know, we're like, hey, you know, just, just go design something, right? But ultimately, city council, it has to have the vision of all the elements of the city. So while, you know, it might be nice to have a Veterans Memorial down at Andy Brown Park, understanding, you know, the cost, the other events that happen there, who activates it, who uses that, I think we need to make sure that we consider all of those points in our final decisions. And while, you know, that might be nice for, you know, for veterans to have a memorial down there, thinking about all the other people. And I just think about, you know, the fireworks display that we had, you know, last, last weekend or whenever that was, is nice. But I mean, what was the report? We had 15,000 people down there? And I don't know, you know, with a stage in front of a memorial down there, if that's the best way to present that. So I definitely favor doing something behind Town Center here. I think that the task force has given us a lot of recommendations about elements to consider, and I love the elements. You know, the fact that we didn't even actually get to see the rendering of the second, you know, kind of the more southern area as you described it, you know, understanding that those elements were in there, but it was just an alternative design. But it still has all the feedback from the, from the task force, which I think I appreciate. And for me personally, I could go with the amphitheater or the southern side. But after considering it, I think the southern side would be a better area for that. I do agree with us raising the budget. I think we need to, wherever it ultimately lands, I think we need to make sure that we have a budget that is appropriate to show the reverence and respect that our veterans deserve. And I think that, you know, even that 400,000, you know, kind of wherever it has landed now, I think it needs to be a little bit higher than that. We need to give staff the freedom to be able to engage architects and, you know, designers so we can plan at an appropriate scale. And then, yeah, I just, I really appreciate the points that you brought up. And I definitely think that we should, I like what you're saying, I'd like to support those things. I think, I think it's important. But I just personally don't see a reason why we should have the task force reconvene. Because if I remember correctly, Jessica may have to help me here, but we had everyone on the task force, the first time they met, agreed, you know, on the design and the elements and stuff. And then the second time, there was this one person that, that for whatever reason changed their mind and stuff. So while I respect, you know, everyone's opinion, you know, there was consensus that was, you know, that was reached. And, you know, I don't, I just don't want to make sure that one person's not blowing up, you know, the consensus that was built there before. So those are kind of my thoughts on that. Thank you for letting me use your cheat sheet.
John?
Yep. The budget, $350,000, was that initially set, or was that af, it came after the focus group came back and said, this is the one or something?
My recollection was, it was a number that, as someone stated earlier, another community had recently constructed something. So it was basically, here's a wag, and here's a number of someone doing something kind of small, or, and that's where the initial number came from.
And that design that Smith had presented was within that budget?
My understanding it was, yes.
Just to clarify on the money, the money part, well, we had, in some of our earlier discussions, I think I had stated that I was envisioning it was gonna be, you know, a few blade walls over in the corner and, you know, and then we came back with this big design, and I was sort of, you know, I was taken aback by how grandiose it was. I wanted to clarify, I was taken aback, meaning I was much more, I was impressed with how big the vision was. It was much more than I thought. And I, we've made this statement about the dog park, that we didn't do it right a decade ago. And that's one of the things I want to avoid by constraining the design on this plaza is, I don't want to come back and say, we didn't do it grandiose enough, or we didn't do it appropriate enough for what it's supposed to represent. And so I, you know, I don't want us to have the regrets later on because we didn't spend enough on it.
Jessica, the first focus group meeting, how many people were there?
I have to go back and hit the, to answer, I believe there was 11 people total. A couple of those were staff. I believe we had the seven veterans and like Chris, who's not a veteran, but was a member of the.
And then the second meeting, how many were there?
We had seven at that meeting. That included one park board member, a couple of staff, and then the rest were focus group members.
The focus group was how many, you said?
At the second meeting, I think there was four at that one, three or four. I have to go back to the direction.
Okay, I was told two, but.
There was at least three, but I need to confirm between three and four, but for sure, three.
But it wasn't the full first focus group?
No, not everybody could attend.
So it wasn't based on the full first group?
No, no.
Whatever this position was.
Yeah, it was just a section of the previous committees, but same group.
Jim?
Thanks, Mayor. So I appreciate, Don, you bringing this up too. You know, Brianna had mentioned this some time ago, and it kind of struck a chord with me. I think I'd like to preserve the amphitheater in terms of the way it is, just for future public gatherings and that sort of thing. And I like this southernmost location because I think it's a little bit more contemplated place. I think it's a place that's appropriate for a veterans' celebration and memorial all at the same time. I agree that, I don't really look at the $350,000 budget as having a whole lot of control or credibility on it because we have no idea, no inspect the materials or really, you know, the construction costs. And it's probably more expensive now than it was a month ago. So, you know, I think we should explore doing it the way, doing it right, doing it the way that truly honors the veterans in terms of the quality of materials. And I just don't think putting it in a public park is going to be the same effect. I like having it near the seat of governance. I think that's important. And, you know, the thing is, we, when we charge a task force with the responsibility to explore an issue, you know, we're asking our fellow citizens to devote their time and energy to something and to study it. And when they come back with a recommendation, I think, particularly when it's, you know, overwhelming in one direction, I think it's important that we simply accept that they looked at it, they discharged their responsibility, and they, they did what we asked them to do. And then when the park board looks at that and affirms that another group of, you know, volunteer citizens spends their time and energy and affirms it unanimously, then I think we have to give some dignity to that effort and that time and energy as well. So, you know, I was ready to vote on it in the workshop, I'm ready to vote on it now. You know, I do think we need to move forward. I don't hear any disagreement that we should have a Veterans Memorial. But that seems to be unanimous. I don't hear any disagreement that it should be worthy of honoring our veterans in terms of the materials used, the design, and that sort of thing. It sounds like there's an awful lot of agreement, save and except, you know, maybe just a few folks led by Mr. LeBarre, to locate it somewhere around Town Center. So, you know, oftentimes with a committee of 14 people, it's hard to get seven people to vote on a sunny day. So when you've got this much unanimity, I think, you know, we should just accept it and move on.
Mayor. Mark?
Thank you, sir. You know, I have a hard time going against the task force and the decision they made with the, with the option one that they were presented. But they, they were not given any direction about, you know, us wanting to preserve the amphitheater for future events or anything like that. So, and we, we didn't, I don't think we gave them proper direction. And, you know, I would be interested in hearing their, their input on that option two. I mean, it was presented, but, you know, I think they may have been overwhelmed by what they saw as option one because, you know, the big, bright, shiny object, and wow, this is, this is really spectacular here. But I think for us as a council, we need to say, the more appropriate place is not in the amphitheater. We want to keep that as is. And then allow them to have input on that design, that option two design, to refine it a little more. Because I don't think they were ever, you know, ever giving any feedback on option two. You know, I think that the concept behind option two is very strong, you know, with those, with the walls going across. And so I think if we just allow the designer to get back together with that task force and have them focus solely on that option, and to get it to be exactly what's desired, would be an important thing to do. And, you know, I think $500,000 is a reasonable number. You know, next week, it's probably gonna cost $600,000, you know, the way things are escalating. But fortunately, we are seeing some slowdown in costs or going as, as much as they have been in the past. But they're still escalating. So I'm all for upping the budget. Quite honestly, being a designer, you have to give us a budget.
Yes.
Otherwise, you know, things will get out of hand. And then we'll come back and ask them to trim it, and then it'll, it'll look like it's trimmed, you know, things are cheapening. So if they know what to, to design towards, and we give them the number, you know, sure, it may be a little bit over and we'll have to adjust there. I think that would just be the appropriate thing. So for me, $500,000 and in that location that's further south. Ready to go?
I'm gonna come back to you in just a second. But, Eze?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the community experience for arranging the walkthrough at the plaza. I learned a lot by having that discussion with the designer. Since then, did the task force meet, or did the park board meet with option one and two?
No, that was not the direction at that point. It was to, I think, for you all to have the discussion first.
Right. We, y'all had asked us to get them to meet. Then you asked us on Saturday to go walk the site. After we walked the site, then it was asked to have the council have this discussion tonight. So not knowing how this discussion was going to go, we helped off on setting incentive meeting with the task force because we didn't know what y'all were gonna do, y'all were gonna do tonight. So depending on what you do tonight, will determine whether or not we even need the task force to reach that.
So I came to know that we are having a discussion today from the agenda meeting, item Friday. So I would like to see a recommendation coming from the task force and the park board on option one and two.
Okay. Don?
The option two feedback, can I, Jessica, can I get some clarification? On the option one and option two, I believe possibly?
They, so both groups did see option one and option two. They both liked both of the designs really equally. The design that you ended up seeing at the April 25 meeting, that design just edged out the other one just ever so slightly. But everyone was still very much in favor of the more southern design, including our park board chair. That was his vote originally was what we're calling option two. So they both have seen both designs and were very favorable to both designs.
Yeah. My understanding was that, that one of the young designers there at the Landscape Architects firm did a 3D presentation, and she was so disappointed that she spent all the time. did a three D presentation and she was so disappointed that she spent all the time and was, it was never presented to, um, the task force.
So the task force did see the three D design of both option one and two. Uh-huh. They saw the, the two D designs and the three D video walkthrough of both designs.
I thought he said otherwise, but.
He, um, yeah, he did say she was disappointed that the focus group and the park board didn't select that.
Oh, didn't select, okay.
As their favorite option, I think the feelings were hurt. But they were very still favorable to both of those.
Okay. Stand corrected. Thank you.
John?
Just, uh, one of, the, the other point I was gonna make on the, on the, the money part, um, cause we don't, it, cause we don't, your, your point is fair about you have to give some kind of parameter. Um, so I, I, I would probably be, you know, I'm gonna just pick a number at this point. I'm gonna say up to a million and a half is what I guess I would recommend for this, to give some parameter, just based on what we're spending on other projects and things. So, uh, I guess part of me wants to say, just go build us, go design us something and bring us something great, but maybe you're right, maybe they do have to have some kind of parameters. But I do think it, I, I, I just don't want them to go in with too small a vision, let me put it that way. I want, I want them to be able to really think what, what can be really good knowing, you know, trusting that everybody's gonna do things that are reasonable. But, so to that point, I guess I would, I would say up to a million and a half dollar number if we have to give some kind of threshold. I don't, I don't think that's completely unreasonable in my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, John and Bijou?
Couple of things. I'm gonna, just like what Mark said, I think the task force actually did see design one and two. And like Jessica said, they actually voted for the design one, right? Uh, even though they saw a design two, which is in the southern side. So if we are gonna say that we're gonna defer their opinion, then, you know, they, they chose design one. So we have to take that into consideration. Number two, I, I appreciate Don, um, increasing the budget. You're right. We don't want to do for the sake of doing it and then come back and say, you know, we could have done better. Um, I, you know, I always wish that the veterans memorial is actually a place that people will come and say, you know, let's go visit there, right? Other cities, they have a pretty nice one. So you, you wanna go visit, not just, oh, they just have one. So increasing the budget, I'm, I'm all for that.
Thank you. Bijou?
So, uh, what I'm hearing from Jessica is the park board and the task force selected option one?
The majority is. There were some park board members, like I said, that favored option two. Uh, but then majority consensus was option one. Uh, but in conversations since, they still liked option two as well, so.
Okay.
If that's something I did.
So they didn't make a recommendation, option versus one versus two?
They did make the recommendation of option one.
Wow, okay, that's what I was, okay. And how much did we spend money on design so far?
Um, thirty thousand.
Thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, we're, um, yes, the contract currently is not to exceed forty-seven, but that's not all that we spent. Um, there, there is some amount remaining.
Do we have any rough estimate on option one, how much would cost to build?
So, uh, so at the time the design was, was created, it was under the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. Um, which could be four to five hundred now. Um, so it, it would really be going back to see, does that, can it still be built within that amount?
I see.
Okay. So, I know we talked about just now preserving the amphitheater, right? I mean, going with design one, Don, how, how do you feel that's gonna affect if we were to use that location? Would, cause it's not actually in the middle, it's actually along the side. So how is that gonna affect it if we want, still want to use the amphitheater for something else? I don't, I, I think in fact, if we use it with the veterans, you know, the walls around it, it actually emphasizes and maybe let people know more about it. So I, I'm just trying to get the idea as to how that would affect the use of it.
Well. This is a discussion.
This is a discussion.
Uh, so, uh, I can give you, I guess, my opinion. I guess having those blade walls there and whatever lighting there is, and I don't know what other alteration, alterations that might be to that part of the amphitheater. I guess my opinion is, it just takes away from it being an amphitheater. Um, if we have, if we have the stuff in the southern plaza and I actually still like the, for my two cents, the battle cross in what I refer to as the grove, I don't know, the, the the group of trees over here, it's over here on the left side of the, uh, of the picture and maybe even the fountain, the water feature still become, it was gonna be a flagpole, right? It was gonna, it was gonna be a married, uh, United States flag at the end of that, that old water feature. So you would still, you would have this veterans plaza come, you know, from the left side of town center there along that grove and then back up into this, I don't know what you call it, an orb or whatever, this little lawn.
Yeah.
That would sort of be the plaza and it would still preserve the whole amphitheater for, I guess, for events and everything. But I, you know, that's, I'm not a designer or a park person or anything else, but that's the way I guess I envision preserving the amphitheater.
All I'm saying is, the design one that we saw, the walls are along the, I guess the, if we're looking at this right now on the right side, it does, it's not right in the middle of it or anything like that. So it wouldn't prevent any events to be able to use that space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, I mean, I, I, I don't know what that, we only, we were only told what the, uh, the second design was, but seeing that first design, going through it, I, I thought it was great just to be able to come in and say, you know, see that, right? But I don't think that would prevent that space being used for anything else. In fact, again, I, I, I think that would make it more attractive for the, um, with all the walls, walls there, you know, all of the veterans as well as having whatever, you know, event there. So just like, what is it, the, um, neighbors helping neighbors, you know, if we had people gathering there, that's just kind of let people know, hey, we have the, um, memorial here too.
So we need to go back with staff with something. And I'm gonna try to shortcut this a little bit here. I'm gonna use, I think, something from everybody of what you said. Jim, you were talking about how the, the, uh, citizens group had fulfilled their mission, they had reported to the park board, and I think that's true. I'd really rather not see us bypass our own process and go back to the citizens group again. Um, and I, from what you were talking about, I do appreciate, you know, a, a look again uh, at some of the design like you were talking about. And I'm, I'm thinking the, probably the best thing that we could do is ask the park board, say, yes, we're in favor of the location, we're in favor of the memorial. We would like you to go in and take a, a second look at, at the designs, keeping in mind that the budget may be, let's give them a number. And that's something that we're gonna have to decide on. Uh, if it's one and a half, that's fine. You know, give them a number and say, would this change your mind about what you would have done or how you would have done it? Cause I, I think that, you know, quite honestly, that might be a, a factor in the, in the decision as well. And I think then to turn it back over to the park board with the different, yeah, we're kind of changing the parameters on them, we're giving them a little bit more budget. I think that would be the appropriate thing for us to do. And let them decide how to handle it at that point. I'm, I'm trying to be process oriented and, and not, I really don't want to see us set, say, we're gonna create a citizens group, they're gonna report to the park board, then they're gonna come to us and we're gonna make a decision. And if we go back and start going back to the citizens group, then we've kind of convoluted that whole thing. But I, I do, I do like going back to the parks board and giving them the latitude of, of taking a second look, realizing that they could make some changes outside of their original budget. Don?
Are, were you, you're saying take it back to the parks board or take it back to the task force?
Park board.
The park board, okay. Um, let me change what I was gonna say, cause I was thinking about the original task force, uh, cause I, I felt like the parameters they gave us, they gave us a bunch of good parameters that were actually included in, I, I believe both the designs that were put out there. So I don't, I didn't know, going back to the task force, it wouldn't necessarily benefit.
And I don't think it would.
Right, okay.
But I wouldn't preclude the park board from doing that if they wanted to.
Okay.
So, you know, let's kind of chain and command it back down to the park board.
Back to the park board and let them, I was just trying to make sure if we went back and asked that they were able to give us, uh, you know, would they give us a different, different answer than what they'd already given us, is, I guess, my thought.
Well, I, I, I think with the, a little bit larger budget, yes, they will give us something different. It may be in the same location, but that's gonna be the decision that they need to make. Kevin?
Oh, I just, I don't know if we need to take it back to park board. I mean, there are several times that Plenium zoning gives us a recommendation and, you know, we do the exact opposite of what they, you know, yeah. Uh, but, I mean, the thing is ultimately, we, we as council have a prerogative to decide, like, this is ultimately what we want. And that's kind of what I was speaking to earlier about, you know, the task force and park board, you know, may not have realized that we, you know, maybe there was a desire to preserve the amphitheater. So with knowing that information, maybe they would have selected, you know, location two. And, and that was, um, or design two. Um, and that was kind of what I, what I heard and, and with what Jessica said was that when we spoke to the, um, the members out here who showed up, they said it was very, it was very close in terms of design one and design two. They liked elements of each of them, but ultimately when the recommendation was to go with design one. But to me, you know, it, it's, as Mark said, we didn't put a lot of parameters around it on, at the beginning. So we just kind of were like, hey, here's what we want and, you know, we're just trying to take the elements that they give us. And that's why I think that ultimately, we have the information, you know, we've been given a recommendation, but sometimes, you know, we have a little bit different vision or more information about what we want to do with a, a particular piece, like maybe preserving the amphitheater. So if the park board and the, the task force, if they like design two as well, but we know that we want to preserve the amphitheater, logically it makes sense that we move over to design two and we, uh, develop that maybe with the increased budget that you were speaking of, so. I don't know, just, I, 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 I don't want to get caught in the feedback loop. And I think that's what you're trying to prevent as well.
Yes, that's, and I'm afraid that you're putting us right in the middle of one.
Well, I mean, and we already have the information, so we say, hey, let's go with design two. That's, I'm actually trying to do the opposite of putting us in a feedback loop, so. Just say, go with design two and, you know, just make sure that the, the budget and design is appropriate. That's what I'm saying.
John?
What, they chose design one, so then you're essentially taking away their, what we put them up to, just like you said.
But do you vote on everything that Plenium zoning?
What I'm saying, we, you want to consider their.
And we did, with the elements that they provided. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that we didn't, uh, if I could steal. You know, we, we didn't give them any direction about all sick services being represented. To be really, not to be disrespectful with Space Force is something that really isn't on my radar very much, so I didn't even consider that one. Um, flags with a blade wall, uh, you know, appropriate lighting, area for remembrance, like, they recommended all of those elements to us. And that's what I'm saying, is like, it, all of that work has already been done. But ultimately, if we decide that location, you know, A is better than location B, that's part of our purview as council. I, I, I'm not throwing away everything that there's, but just saying like, if we ultimately decide that we, we want to preserve the amphitheater, well, the next logical thing is, is the, that southern lawn area. And that's all I'm saying is, I, I, I'm not saying that we disregard everything, but sometimes we have to take the information that's given to us and we have to make a decision. And that's all I'm saying. But I just don't want us to, I mean, we don't, just like with some of our other task force, like I, I go back to Plenium zoning, I'm not trying to pick on P and Z, but sometimes we just do something different than they recommend. I, you know, we're, we appreciate their recommendations and the hard work and the information that we learned from their process helps us make the ultimate final decision. That's what I'm saying.
Have anyone, have you seen the design, the other design yet? I know we walked through it, just kind of described it. Have you seen the presentation?
It was, it was distributed in advance of the meeting.
Mm-hmm. The design two. Design two?
We, we didn't see the three D video, but we, but we saw the design, like, on paper.
Thing, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, it was kind of helpful to look at that while we're out there.
Mm-hmm.
And Sumit did a really good job of walking us through it.
I don't understand that. Okay. I remember that. And maybe that's why I feel like I'm okay with that, because I, I got to see the.
I don't. Well, yeah, I printed out a copy and brought it over.
Thanks, Mark.
Oh, you printed it out.
Yeah.
But yeah, it'd be interesting to see that, uh, three D, um, model or fly through that they have.
Don? Well, y'all were about the same.
Go, Jim.
Uh, I mean, that's, that's why, you know, I'm ready to go ahead and, I, I do think giving the designer, you know, greater budget, uh, will inform the design far, far better. And I'd like, I'd like to, to do that, go back to them at this location on option two, which has support. And it's not as if that was, you know, uh, unsupported or, or disliked entirely or anything like that. I'd like to go ahead and go with option two on the, the southernmost location, um, and go to them with a, with a bigger budget and then see where we are. Cause I think at that point, we'll have a better ability to really, you know, evaluate, you know, what we're looking at putting in there. And is it, is it the kind of thing that's suitable to avoid, you know, uh, as Don put it, not doing it right.
So if I could get four hands that agree with, I think, Jim and Kevin on that, which is to go with option two with an increased budget back to the designer, I mean, that's what we can do.
Do we need to, do we need to send them out on?
Does that work?
Um, one point five was what I heard.
I'm in.
I'm in. Don?
Well, I'm in.
John?
I would like to see option two, the three D first.
Dude, is it, is it, I think it might be in your email, right?
Three D? No, not the three D.
Oh, you was in the three D, awesome.
Mark? Oh. Well, I know I'm not gonna get what I want. I can see the numbers. But I definitely don't want option one. So I've, I've got to go along with you, with you guys, with that increased budget. And we'll just have to forego, um, having the task force take a second look at that, uh, option two.
Bijou?
I would like park board to reconsider the increased budget and then option two.
I think I've got four votes to go back with an increased budget.
Yeah, I was taking you as a consensus, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, okay, too.
What, what did I say?
Both votes.
I'm sorry. I think I had a consensus. Mark, I was taking you as a positive. So, um, Mike, option two?
Um.
One point five budget?
Yes, what I've heard is that we are going to go back to the architect, one point five million dollar budget. It's the, uh, design two on the, uh, southern portion of the plaza. And we will have a greater discussion about the overall design. And, um,
And who's?
Given, given that, I'm going to presume that the increased budget is going to take that over on this design cost. So we're gonna have to probably be before you with a design contract. So just, next step for us is to come back to you with a, uh, our, the contract for the design. Uh, and then that'll have the schedule with critical dates as far as decision making. And if you want to give us some further direction at that point in time, you'll have an opportunity to do that. And we're more than happy to get the three D design two out to the council. We don't have to wait on that, we'll just, we'll, we'll make sure that that gets out.
Don?
Just for clarification in deference to the idea of going back to the park board, what do we think we would get out of the park? What, what do we, what, what might we expect if it went back to the park board for evaluation, further evaluation?
I think it's a moot point now, right? You're already for.
Well, ignoring that for a second, I'm just saying, what, but, but there's certainly a concern about going back to the park board, more than I guess I'm, you think there would be something we would get back? I don't know that we would get something back differently, but that's what I want to make sure I understand, is what, what do you think might come back differently?
Well, we are not in a hurry. We are going to implement this by next Veterans Day. So we are here and plus. So we don't need to be in a hurry moment to do this. So let's go back one more month or whenever the next meeting is with the park board. We selected them to make a recommendation and they have, we, we are providing them more details. The budget increased and also, um, you know, for them to consider all the elements they talked about, the designer talked about during that time. I didn't see the three D, John just stated he didn't see it. So within our own council, we haven't seen it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I think there was no reason to hurry up now, that's what I'm thinking. Let them come back and evaluate again. We, you know, appointed them, let, give them a chance as well. Make a recommendation by seeing all these new numbers.
One last thing. I, I, and the only thing I would say is like, I, I think. One last thing. I, I, and the only thing I would say is like, I think there still might be a little bit of a, you know, like, we've seen that from the initial time we had this meeting, the budget went from 350 to, is it 500? So I, I think that is kind of part of the pressing. I, I, I heard Mark say that things are starting to show signs of slowing down a little bit, but
Still increasing.
Slowing down is still increasing. And so that, that would be my, one of the reasons why I have that sense of urgency is that the faster we can get design done, the faster that we can, you know, get that process rolling. And, and again, you know, build something that is respectful, that is nice, but also trying to not draw it out to where we're, you know, we're at 2 million or 2 and 1/2 million or anything. I, I don't want to draw it out like that. So that is kind of why my sense of urgency says, let's move on it now. But I just wanted to share that.
Yeah. What I heard from Jessica is we can get it done with this same idea for $400,000 or 500.
So, well, that was design one. That was not design two.
Right.
It was a similar price? I, I don't know.
Right. That's exactly why I want Park Board to consider that. That is the precise reason I recommend going back to Park Board. We are not in a hurry.
But they're not going to consider pro, cost, right? I mean, the park board's not going to decide the cost or what's...
As he indicated earlier, we didn't give them enough, you know, budgetary constraints or guidelines. Hey, what you should be considering. Now we have increased the amount substantially. They have new feedback to provide us.
I may be able to help. May. The Parks Board meets again in August. Jessica and her team can take the 3D of the design two, get it in front of them with the idea that the council has said that the southern location is the preferred location. The budget has increased. Here's what design two looks like. Here's the parameters that you've given. Is there anything else that you'd like to see, not see, do differently, or anything along those lines? Because you've given the architect a lot more flexibility in terms of what's going on. And they can get input at that point. Because I will tell you that it's going to take a little time for Jessica and her team to put together the contract for the architect for this project to get back to council. So you'll have, we have an opportunity and a mechanism to get in front of the Parks Board, have this conversation, say, this is what council said, this is the reason council said what they did. They can watch tonight and see the discussion about the amphitheater and so forth. And they can provide feedback to Jessica and her team as they get ready to go to work with the architect with a larger budget. At the same time, I can ask Jessica and her team if Sami could at least do a guesstimate of what the design two is based on what's happening, so that we can, we can approach both scenarios. And then when we finally get the, the architect's contract to you, we can kind of bring you just up to date. Here's what Parks Board's done. Here's the estimated budget that was designed to as it was originally proposed. You will have seen the 3D by then. So you will have even more information. And it keeps the ball rolling. Because there are going to be critical dates. The decisions are going to have to be made in order for construction to happen in a timely manner.
I think, Bijan, I think that keeps Park Board involved. So I think that was the important part for me. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. That's, it's been 45 minutes. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. What's that?
The progress.
It is progress. Thank you. Item C, that's what everybody's been waiting for. This is Discover Capel funding proposal from Miss Ellie Braxton. Ellie?
I'm going to set this here. If this is in your way, let me know. How long do I have to see these? Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I'm going to lay these down here for you guys to see. And then I'm going to hand out these for you guys to pass. Alrighty. Well, good evening again. And it's that time where Discover Capel is coming to you, working on planning for our budget for 2024. I'm going to go through with you what we've accomplished thus far and how we've spent the money that you've allocated thus far. And then I'm going to turn it over to Belmont a little bit to share with you results. And then I'm going to talk to you about what our request is for 2024. I think all of you guys have seen the proposal that I sent to the city. And so I'm going to go through this and then take your questions. Okay. We, we have a mission that we've accomplished, you know, that we've put into place. And it is to foster economic development in Capel by positioning it as one of the premier locations in the metroplex for day travelers, meetings, conventions, and sporting tournaments through strategic marketing, sales, and destination development. I'm not going to read all of this to you guys word for word. But we now have a set of goals and objectives that we want to accomplish, of course, by creating awareness of Capel for, you know, travelers and daytrippers and people that are seeking adventure and entertainment. We want to increase the overnight hotel occupancy in Capel. We want to positively impact the Capel economy. And we want to ensure that it's a positive experience when you visit Capel. We want to increase the visibility for us as a place for, for conventions, a destination where people come for their conventions and their meetings, and for entertainment travel. And when I say that, you know, they may be coming in for a Cowboys game. They may be coming into town for a show or, or a Mavs game or, or anything like that. We, we want us to be as visible as a destination for that. We want to assist our tourism partners. And when I use that term, I'm referring to our hotels or restaurants or retail and our entertainment with, we want to help them with developing and improving their marketing and operations. And we want to increase local knowledge, our residents, and as well as people surrounding Capel about the tourism available here in Capel. Now, this is what we've done in '22 and '23 with the funds that you allocated for. So of course, we hired an outside marketing firm, which is Belmont Ice House. They are online with us tonight. You see them up there. Hey, girls. We created the Discover Capel website, our social media pages, which right now include Facebook and Instagram. We are exploring LinkedIn as another possible venue for us, based on what our market tells us. We hired a social media manager that oversees our social media on a regular basis, doing not constant, but continuous postings, depending on what's going on in Capel. And we've developed tracking, a tracking system of all the paid advertising that we're doing. We developed marketing materials with QR codes that go, take people directly to the website for Capel hotels to distribute in their lobbies and in their hotel rooms. The items that I put there at the end of the table, I wanted you guys to see. The tall little banner that you see at the back, all of the hotels have those. Some of them have them in their lobbies, but all of them are using them for trade shows and marketing events that they do, so that when they're traveling, they're visiting with potential tourists and tourism, that they have this to promote Capel. There is also the, the smaller eight and a half by 11 sign that you see there with the QR code. Those are in the lobbies of all of the hotels. Most of them have them over near their banquet facility, excuse me, their, their eating facilities, where people go and eat, have their morning breakfasts and things. That QR code takes everyone directly to the website. So if someone's visiting in a hotel, they want to know what's, what is there to do in Capel. Their staff knows to direct them to that sign. They scan that QR code and that pulls up the website and tells them everything they need to know about visiting Capel. The smaller little signs that spin there, those are in the, I know, five different restaurants, and we're working to get them in more. So when you go in, like Local Diner, J Macklin's, J C's, any of those hotels, excuse me, restaurants like that, those are there, usually at the entrance or at the bar. So for people that are visiting, they can scan those if they're interested in what's going on in Capel. You also receive those key cards that are on, that I handed out to all of you. One of the hotels is now putting those in all of the key card packets. When you come in, you get your key card, you know, you check into a hotel room. Those are in the packets with them. And so the, the guests can just scan those. And again, they're told, you know, here, just scan this. And it tells you where, everything there is to do in Capel. There's also the flyers that I handed out to you guys. Aloft has put those flyers in every one of their hotel rooms. In place of a directory, you know, you should go into a hotel room and there's a directory there. There is not. You get that and you scan that. And that brings up a directory of everything there is to do in Capel. It takes you directly to the website. And Fairfield also has the flyers. Aloft is going to be using the key cards as well. But Aloft is not putting them in the hotel rooms. They're using them to hand out to people when they need the information. And they're taking them with them on the meetings that they have with potential conventioners and tourisms and things like that. And so, as you see, we're distributing a lot of information, information at the hotels and in their lobbies. We've also distributed these flyers and, and the banner and all of that to all of the city properties that made sense to have them. And we don't have them at the fire department, because nobody ever goes to visit the fire department. But we do have one of those Discover Capel signs at the police department. We do have them at Life Safety Park and the biodiversity center and all, all of the city properties around town. And, and then several other locations that have lobbies and entrances where people can come in and they like, what's there to do here? And so we've worked really hard to get that information out. We just have, we have a Discover Capel, what we call our client team. And you have a list of the names of who, who is on that client team. Several of them are here tonight. I do want to thank our chairman of the board for being here, Corey Stoller. Thank you for being here tonight. And, and so we have that client team. And we meet with them monthly, just to go over everything that we're doing with Discover Capel. Daniel Armbruster leads that group. Daniel's here tonight. And, and they, we can, we consult with them and they advise us in areas on, on the local advertising and promotions. The year is a continuous oversight of the day-to-day management of the Discover Capel campaign. And that does include, like I said, weekly and monthly meetings with the marketing firm and our contractors. We have a couple of contractors working with us, aside from the marketing firm. And, and we have been financially responsible with the funds that you have given us. We actually had a little bit of an excess on the last round that you gave us. And so we used that to make some capital investments, like purchasing a, a camera, so that we can do nice looking photography on a day-to-day basis for our social media and things like that. Now, I'm going to turn it over to the marketing firm, because this is the tracking system that they designed specifically for Discover Capel, so that they can show you the results thus far of what they've been doing. And this is with the 2003 funds that you guys approved that were, that is, that is currently running from February 23 to October. Yeah, I'm trying to think, was it September, October of this year? And so I think I can just click this and it goes into their site. Whoop, it does not. Can you click it from there? I'm going the wrong way. There. Are you going to click it there? Because if you click on it, it will just take you straight, directly to the site. Oh, there we go. And so I'm going to let them tell you which, because you're going to have to do the clicking. Sorry. They'll tell you which item they want you to click on first.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll definitely tell you when to progress to the next page. So hello, good evening, everyone. And thanks for allowing us to join you again. Last time we were able to join you in person, but we are so thankful to be here virtually with you. My name is Erica Page, and I'm the account director for Belmont Ice House. And with me is Cassie Bunce. She is our media director. What you're looking at here is just the overview of our campaign, or our campaign parameters, as we call them. So we're going to walk you through this. And then we're going to give you a very high level look at our media metrics to date. We're going to keep it high level to start, but if there's any areas that you want us to expand, please let us know. And we're happy to do that. So I'm going to pass it over to Cassie to take you through this first slide.
Thanks, Erica. Yeah, as Erica said, so this is a new dashboard. I believe last year you guys got Elite. I'm not sure if everybody did, but I know some of you guys did. And we heard the feedback. It was a little bit cumbersome, hard to understand. So this is our new format that we've created. And I think it's a little bit more easier, easy to track. So on the left-hand side, it's interactive. You can click on each of those items and it will take you to a page to get that information. So starting on this page, this is just giving you a quick snapshot of what we're, what we're hoping to have to do for this year on the paid media side. So our objective being to increase unaided brand awareness and consider, in consideration of day shift first. So when I say unaided brand awareness, we don't want some, you know, an ad or a PR article or something like that, triggering somebody to know about Capel. We want it to be kind of kitchen table and top of mind. So super important if we're going to continue promoting Capel and getting people to come to it and, and experience it. We're also kind of focused more in on that we've, we've managed to do examples, which kind of the sweet spot is 35 to 49. And it's essentially couples with children who lead busy, active lives. We're targeting at this point, from a, more from a budgetary standpoint, four counties. So Collin County, Dallas County, Denton, and Terrence. Once we really kind of gain momentum and, and really satisfy those, then we can talk about expanding. We're now just the board. And then this year, we're also doing, so just paid social search. We have incorporated this year digital display. And then also the digital out-of-home that we did last year as well. And we started at the beginning of May, and we will run this through the end of October. And then if you click on Campaign Insights on that table of content, we can move into the high-level results. So again, I'm going to keep this extremely high level, because again, we've only been running for a couple of months and we've got, you know, several months left. But to, to date, this is actually through the ninth, so Sunday, we've spent roughly $32,000 of the budget so far, and received delivered out 4.7 million impressions. We've actually had a great click-through rate. So anytime somebody's clicking on an ad, click-through rate means the impressions that were served to the number of clicks. So it's that ratio between. And we've got a 0.62. Usually we see about a 0.25. So we're, we're very high on that. And a little sneak peek, a lot of that has to do with July 4. We saw massive engagement for that. So we want to keep that momentum going. We've also reached over 391,000 people, so which is great. And then you can also see, and we'll get to it in a second, this is just letting you know that all, all of the media tactors are meeting or beating the benchmarks that we've set. So we'll go over them, over those in a second. Also, at this point, search is yielding the highest click-through rate, as well as conversion rate. Conversion rate is people going to the landing page and, and performing the actions that we see fit. So it's at 104%, which means 4% more are going there multiple times or viewing multiple pages on their visits. So we usually see that about 90%. So 14% over that is great. And going to date, this is just giving you some, some engagement and some demographics. So we have about 30,000 engagements so far. That is anybody that is clicking on the ad, viewing the ad on Facebook and posting. So either reacting to the, the ad itself, commenting, sharing, saving it. A kind of surprising, 57% of the engagement that we're seeing is with men. And about 45% are 55-plus. That's not exactly what we want to see. We want to see it skew a little bit younger. So those are often... So those are optimizations that we're currently starting to put in place. And then if you click on Key Performance Indicators, this is the kind of quick metric snapshot. So we, at the top, you'll see where it says volume and has the tactics listed on the left-hand side. This is where we monitor pacing. We want to make sure that what we've planned and the number of people we're reaching, the amount of impressions that are being served is exactly how it should be. So we monitor this on a daily basis, making sure that we're reaching those people and we're going to be able to deliver on the, the planned impressions. You'll see that added value says TBD. We won't be able to provide that number obviously until the campaign ends. And then we'll take the difference of if there was anything delivered over what was planned, that difference, we will put a number to it and we'll quantify that pretty. And then on the bottom side, or bottom part of that slide, is going to be the quality and value. So these are the two main benchmarks that we look at. Depending on the media tactic, whether it's social, search, display, or the out-of-home portion, they have different ways that we look at it in order to say if something is successful. We're not just looking at it from up here. We also want to look at the individual tactics. So quality is the action that we want somebody to take. And then the value metrics are going to be, you know, how much did it cost and where to get that action? So for each KPI, you can see that we are overperforming. Everything is in green. This is kind of a stoplight view. So if something was doing poorly, you would see it in red. If something was within like 10%, you could see it in yellow. So you can see that we're actually doing really well. Everything at this point is beating benchmark. So as Erica said, we're going to go over just very high level. Obviously, there's a lot more options for you and pages for you to look at. That gets into the kind of weeds of the media. Happy to go into anything if you're, if you're interested, but didn't want to take up the entire time with this because we could be here all month. So if there are any questions or anything you guys want to look at further?
Or Ellie, is there anything in particular that you wanted Cassie and me to speak to before we open it up for questions or comments?
We expanded, well, what happened this year that I wanted to point out to them was in last, last year with their funding, we kind of put together a marketing plan that was over a large amount of areas and, and we narrowed that area this past year or this year to just four different counties. And Belmont looked at it and said, there are other ways we feel we can get a better result from this. And so we did begin purchasing search. And y'all need to speak, speak a little bit more on that. You began purchasing advertising on, on the internet through Google, through our social media and things like that, that we had not done the year before. And we were really pleased with those results. Ellie, do you want to talk about that a little?
Sure, yeah. So we do have a search campaign running. So to kind of, I don't have the buildup in front of me to show you guys, but we have various ad groups. In fact, if you want to click on the search button there, it will show you the ad group. Oh, sorry, on the, on the gray, yeah. So this is just an overview and then it gets into the weeds of all the keywords that we're running and the actual tax stats as well. But at the top, you can see that we, these are all the ad groups that we're running, how much we've spent to date, all the way across to, you know, your cost per click, the number of clicks and the landing page views. So it's doing really well. Basically, I mean, and not surprising, our brand ad group is converting the most at 159. But what I think is really interesting and great for you guys is, so this top one, conquesting. So this is basically, we want to steal share from Addison, Grapevine, even Fredericksburg and anywhere. We want to steal share. So we are targeting those searches. So we are conquesting, trying to get them to Copel. And it's doing really well. We've got a great $1.17 cost per click and a conversion rate of 111. So we are doing just that. But you can, you know, again, there's a lot more detail that goes into this. But in all of these ad groups, we've made sure that we have pages on the site that we can direct people to, to make sure that the content of the ads as well as the content of the website and search terms are relevant. So it is, and it's also supporting search. Well, search is supporting social and out-of-home. All of it really is supporting each other. So I think that's also why we see high numbers on the brand ad group.
And one other thing, Cassie, that I found really interesting in your report was you were able to determine which one, which advertising performed the best and what we got the biggest response from. I think dining was the best response that we got, if I remember correctly. And then the carousel advertising as far as clicks, if I remember right.
Yeah, and that's just going into the details of the creative itself. And we didn't, actually what's, what really kind of popped thus far as the 4th of July stuff. And so we won't know for probably a month or so once. Because now that we're not running an event, we can really kind of focus in on the actual Discover Copel messaging and really get a better feel for our people who are interested in farmers market or the restaurants or kayak game, any of those things.
We have a question here. Mark?
Can we go back to the previous page?
Which was?
KPI.
KPI, Key Performance.
So down the, the bottom row, Digital OOH, is that a negative 68%?
No, that's on the pacing side. So basically this is just showing that we have 68% left of the impressions to deliver. Since we can't click on an actual digital screen that is, you know, or a movie theater screen, the only thing that we can ensure and monitor is impression delivery. So what this is saying is to date, we have 68% left to deliver. So we are, we're pacing on, on point, so.
Thank you.
Yes, with respect to, thank you for all this, Ellie. With respect to that same chart, what's the source of your benchmarks on the quality and value metrics?
So on the digital out-of-home, it's going to be based on what we purchased. But for social search and display, it's taking into consideration how things performed last year as well as what is industry standard. And I always kind of lower them or higher than whichever, you know, increase whichever way we want in order to challenge it a little bit further. But yeah, I mean, it's historical performance for you guys as well as industry standard.
Yeah, and so last year we were only looking at industry benchmarks because we had not run a campaign. But this year going in, we were able to take last year's performance with the industry benchmarks and merge those to set our benchmarks.
Thank you. And are the industry benchmarks that you're utilizing calculated based on number of households or population or demographics or how was that?
It's based on category.
Category, like what categories?
So travel, tourism, as well as the media tactic in general. So I look at for paid social specifically, what is the industry benchmark for that? What's standard for travel, tourism? Sometimes we can narrow it by region, but mostly it's based on US.
Okay, thank you very much.
And as you can imagine, the, the benchmark for something like an hotel, online retailer is completely different than this industry.
Thank you.
And did you guys see a big bump on 4th of July? Because we saw a lot of engagement on the social ads. Really impressed with the engagement we saw.
Because we had people shovel.
So other than the fact that we had 15,000 people here for the 4th of July, what would have been the reason that they would have gone and clicked? I mean, I don't see the correlation. I mean, yes, we had a huge bump of people here, but why would they have done? Was it because they were coming from out of town and were clicking to look for things to do in here in town? Or what was it? Do you have any justification for why?
Can you go to the next?
A spike in population like that would cause a jump in clicks?
I don't guess I'm understanding the question. We did, we did, we ran social ads and digital out-of-home ads promoting your 4th of July events.
Okay.
So if people were interested in it, then they would have engaged with it. And so I was wondering if there was any sort of attribution, if y'all saw an increase because we were promoting those events?
Got it. Thank you.
Would you, would you say there was an increase?
Yeah, so there's no way for us to accurately measure. It's always just an educated guess. But the numbers that we saw on July 1st were indicative of the same numbers we saw with the weather correlation. And so I can't speak to this, but definitely there was, it was higher than last year. I can attest to that for sure.
And, and I don't know if you ladies can see it or not, but I had Ashley move forward to the next page because what I wanted to share with the mayor, I think might be what he's talking about, is if you look, they, we went, you know, we, we, we set up the website. We set up the social media. We, we started promoting it when it first came out. And then we went dark, what they call going dark, for a couple of months while we were ramping up for the next campaign. And like I said, Belmont has taken a targeted campaign this year of, of specific things they're going to promote. So in May of '23 is when they ramped up to start promoting and started buying advertising, social media and search and all of that. And you see, and I'm going to have to move forward because I can't see it or I'm right behind you so I can do it here. You see that in May of '23, there were 669 visits to the website and 2132 page views, which means they click on different pages. In June, it ramped up to 14,808 visits and then 27,116 page views. So that tells us that people were clicking on the ads, they were clicking on the social media because every time they clicked it, it takes them straight to our website, which then they click on to go to the city website. So that was, I think that's what you're asking is how many see that?
The answer to my question was, we targeted the 4th of July celebration. And since we had a large population, we saw a huge uptick in, in engagement. That was a comment.
And like I said, you see these people that were going online and, and looking at the, our page. And so they were most likely looking for information on the July 4th celebration and gathering more information while they were there. So I think, anybody have any other questions on that?
Kevin does.
Just a quick question about the, obviously, you know, you see the huge spike in visits and page views, but the average time on site was only nine seconds. Does that mean that they were, they were directed directly to information about the fireworks? They saw it and then they're good? But I'm assuming that's average time.
On the front page of our website, you had the, the link that took them to July 4th information, which in turn directed them directly to the city site.
Oh, so it, basically that was a link to the city site, so.
Yeah, but they had to hit our site first.
Got it.
Yeah. Can I answer those questions? Okay, so I think I can go on to the next one.
Got one more.
You got one more question?
But I'm assuming you increased, we increased something between May and June though, right? I mean, we were promoting 4th of July. So I mean, so like going from whatever the numbers were, 600 to 14,000 was also a function of, we spent a lot more dollars that month. Isn't that correct?
Yes, I think Cassie will have to speak too. We only bought a boost on social media once based on what the, that says. But Cassie can address what they spent on the social media.
So part of the correlation is not, it's not like the same 100 ads were out there and we just got clicked a bunch more. It was a lot more ads, right?
Yes, there were a lot more ads. And they were targeted ads about this specific thing is happening. And we're finding we get a lot better response from that.
And also we had, we did a phased launch with some of the other types of media. So we started with search and paid social. And then as the summer hit, we expanded into display and digital out-of-home. So trying to be, you know, smart with the dollars, knowing that we needed to cover a lot of time with not as huge of a budget. So, but yeah, that's the difference between spend in May and June is we had all media tactics coming online in June.
And not only were we running the 4th of July ads, but we also had more general brand awareness ads. So just our Discover Copel featuring our beautiful hero photos that we have gotten over our two, or one photo shoot, soon to be second photo shoot, completed photos. But nevertheless, I just wanted to speak to that, that we were not just promoting the 4th of July, but promoting Copel as a general destination.
And so in the respect of time, I'm going to go ahead and move on into.
Got a question up here for you?
I'm sorry, I didn't see one.
So this question's for Jessica. At the 4th of July celebration, did we have any local vendors? I didn't attend, so I'll just add.
So we had the Copel band, I know was out there. So we didn't have an artisan vendor village like we've had in previous events. Strictly because the feedback we received is we needed more food truck options. So the whole west lawn was dedicated all to food trucks. And so we eliminated like a vendor marketplace there.
All right. So moving forward, I just want to get into our proposal for 2024. And you guys have the budget that I put in your package on of how we have spent the funds that you gave us for 2023. So if you have questions about that, I'm, I'm open to those, but just going to move forward on the 2024. Of course, we want to continue the marketing campaign with Belmont Ice House and using them. We are now a member of the Texas Association of CBBS and have been, or getting actively involved with them. We want to continue whatever educational programs to help us with enhancing that advertising and promotional ideas. And we want to work closely with the historical society to utilize vineyards as that actual spot that people go if they want some collectibles or gift items or some information about the community and stuff like that. They would not come to the chamber office. They would be going to vineyards for that and we would send them there. And the big thing is we want to actually hire a staff person or probably a contract employee or company. You can do either one to manage Discover Copel and service that liaison with the hotels and restaurants and retailers to attack tourism here and the day trippers as well. So there'll be more of a focus on specific working directly with the hotels. The hotels are telling us right now, the meetings I've had with them is they're doing okay with business during the week. It's the weekend traffic that they need help with. And, and so we need someone that can work with them and the restaurants and all the other entertainment and all of that to be that liaison with them. And, and once that person is on, well, we're kind of there already, but putting together a hotel council again, that will work closely with that staff person to coordinate conventions and events in Copel. Those are the highlights of what we're asking for. And so you'll see in the budget that we have budgeted for those specific items. And we also budgeted for some capital expenditure because if we get a new person, they're going to need a computer and supplies and all that. They will be based out of the Chamber of Commerce office. And so there will be some facility expenses, but they would, we would need funds to cover all of that. And, okay, so this is the actual budget itself. As you see, we are requesting funds for the contractor. Like I said, I'm talking to a company now, so I'm not sure if it'll be individual contractor or if we'll contract with a company, but I put funds in for that. Our professional services, because again, we have a webmaster that we currently pay and we have a social media manager that we currently pay. And then currently, you know, for our facilities and for the chamber staff time right now, you have a program management fee. The advertising costs as long, as well as the expenses for the marketing materials like the banners and the signs and everything that we've made. The facility fee itself, which it isn't too exorbitant, but again, it would be, you know, the, you know, there's overhead. There's copying machines and lights and water and all. There's copying machines and lights and water and all that stuff. And like I said, capital acquisitions, memberships. Right now, the only membership that we feel we need is that membership in the Texas Association of CBBS because they are really a great source of information for us in training. And then we would probably send, I'm gonna be attending in August. And next year, we'll send whoever staff person we have, whether it's me or the contractor, to the TACBB convention. And so all of that totals $358,144. And that's what we're requesting. Any questions?
The marketing materials and those costs right there? Is that something that's gonna fluctuate or is that?
It can. Currently, like I said, we had the key cards printed. And when I took them to A-Lock, I took 400. She said if we give them to every person that walks in, we'll be out in two weeks. That's 400 in two weeks' time. That's pretty expensive. So what they're focusing on right now is just weekend traffic, giving it to their weekend traffic because their weekly traffic already has an agenda while they're there. They already know where they're going. And so those expenses like that, the more hotels that decide they want to use them, the greater that expense might be. And then, of course, we have these documents and we have the materials all in place. I don't anticipate us adding any more to that, but it could. But the big thing that I put in there was for like the key cards or things like that and printing the flyers that go into the hotels and stuff. Any other questions? All righty, and I just want y'all to enjoy our latest photos. You'll start seeing those on the market more, but these are the new photos from the photo shoot we just did.
I was gonna say, or in the top corner.
All of these folks are local residents, except for the little girl. The little girl with a model that we actually had to hire, but the rest of them are all local residents.
Real quick, you doing another photo shoot next year, is that the idea?
No, we won't, we do not have one budgeted for next year. Just because we've done two main ones, major ones now. And we feel like we can probably utilize what we have for at least this next 2024.
Okay, okay, thanks.
On the website, it's great that you did the QR codes, it takes you right to it. And I was looking at it, and then it's got the list of, for example, all the dining places, right? But, and I don't even know how much it costs if it's possible. You know how when you look for food near me and map pops up and all the location within Capel and so and so? Is that something that's not possible? You know what I'm talking about?
I do know what you're talking about. And let me talk with the webmaster and see how that works.
Food or services, whatever it is that you're looking for, the map will show up and it tells you where it is and then down.
The map, we did explore that. We explored the possibility of a mapping app that when people want to know how to get to this or that. And I think it was $375 to have it done, which was fine. But then they wanted like another 300 some dollars a month to maintain it.
It just makes it easy for them to see where it is and where they are.
Yeah, and so I can talk with her and see if she's found any other options.
I'm not trying to explain women, but?
Yeah, it was pretty expensive to do it. Yeah, we didn't feel like we had enough traffic yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Hannah and team city staff bringing a visitor's tab on the city website. So then we have a new visitor's tab on the main page. And you click on it, it will take you to Discover Capel. I also requested Ellie to add on the Chamber website at the top with the visitor's tab. So they can click on it and it will take you to the Discover Capel.
And we are going to, the only challenge we have is that we were out of tab space on our website. And so Cindy and I talked about that on Monday. And she's gotta move some stuff around, but she is in the process of saying that there'll be a visitor tab on the Chamber website too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item D is budget process and tax rate calculation presentation. Miss Tian, don't tell us we're in the middle of budget season, are we?
No, we're in the beginning.
So good evening, Mayor Council. This evening, I will be providing you and the viewers with information that will help as we get into the budget workshops, which begin this Thursday. This presentation will be a refresher for some and new information for others. And before I begin, I did want to point out that I have several staff members with me that you will see more of this month. Jerry Benatatos is our Strategic Engagement Manager. He's in the back row. And then we have Jessica Almendares, who is our Budget Officer. Right in front of Jessica is our newest member, Javier Olguin, who's our Budget Analyst. He's been here two weeks and two days. And then we have Jerry Young, who is our Business Analyst. And so you will be seeing a lot of them this month. So now I'll begin. So the topics that I'd like to cover this evening are fund structure. So what are funds and why are they used? Budgeting, why do we budget and what is the budget process? And then the last topic will be the property tax rate. So I'll cover the property tax rate setting process and how to calculate both the new revenue and the voter approval rate. First, I'd like to cover funds. And I start with funds because it's important to have an understanding of the various funds, their revenue sources, and then their unique purposes before discussing the budget. So basically, if funds segregate the monies of the city according to legal or purpose restrictions. For example, the debt service fund is where the interest in sinking or the INS portion of the property tax rate and the related principal and interest on the debt is recorded. And so the tax levy is legally restricted for debt payments. And utilizing a separate fund provides that transparency regarding the use of the tax levy. So what are fund categories used by Capel? And Capel uses three fund categories. And those fund categories are governmental funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds. The governmental funds are generally used to account for tax-supported activities or activities with legal or purpose restrictions. And Capel has 32 funds that fall under the governmental fund type category. Next, we have proprietary funds. And they're used to account for activities that are similar to activities found in the private sector. And Capel has four funds that fall under the proprietary fund type. And finally, we have fiduciary funds. And they're used to report assets held in a trust agreement or custodial capacity for the benefit of others. It cannot be used to support the city's own programs. And so Capel has two funds that are, that fall under the fiduciary fund category. And those are the Other Post-Employment Trust Fund, which is to report the resources held in trust for the healthcare benefits of members. And then the other is the Health Reimbursement Arrangement, which is used to account for the contributions and distributions on behalf of members of the HRA.
Don't give all four of them, could you give an example of a proprietary fund?
Yes, and I will cover that. I'll get there, you're ahead of me.
Thank you.
So for the governmental category, we have five different governmental fund types. The first is the General Fund, which is used to record the general operations and maintenance of the city. The resources of this fund determine the service levels as well as the general maintenance of the city. Next are the debt service funds. And the city has two debt service funds. One debt service fund is used to record the principal and interest payments on general obligation and certificate of obligation bonds that are property tax-supported debt of the city. This is where we would record the revenue generated from the interest in sinking portion of the tax rate and then record the principal and interest payments on the bonds outstanding. The other debt service fund is the CRDC Debt Service Fund, which is used to record the debt issue for the CRDC projects. And that's the Capel Recreation Development Corporation. And so then related sales tax that's needed to make those principal and interest payments is also reported in this fund. Next are your special revenue funds. And these are used to record the proceeds from special revenue sources that are restricted for a specific purpose. Examples of special revenue funds are the cemetery, again, CRDC, the Crime Control and Prevention District, the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, and then various court-related funds. Capital project funds, they're used to account for capital projects, which include acquisition or construction of city facilities and infrastructure such as streets. And then the last governmental fund type used by the city is the permanent fund type. And a permanent fund is used to report resources that are legally restricted to the extent that only earnings and not principal may be used to support the program of the city. And so as I mentioned, the cemetery is considered a special revenue fund. However, the cemetery places 15% of the revenue generated from the sale of plots and niches into a permanent fund. And so then the earnings of the permanent fund will be used to maintain the cemetery once all the plots and niches are sold. And here you go, Mayor. As I mentioned, Capel uses funds that fall into the proprietary fund category. And we have enterprise funds or a enterprise fund, an enterprise fund, and then internal service funds. So the enterprise funds are used to account for operations where the intent of the city is that the cost of the service provided is recovered through user fees. And Capel has one enterprise fund, which is the Water and Sewer Fund. Next are internal service funds. And they're used to account for goods or services provided by one fund to another. And the city has three internal service funds. The self-funded health fund, the capital replacement fund, and the enterprise solutions replacement fund. So now that you have an understanding or an overview of the city funds, we'll move into the budget process. So first, the reason that we budget is because it's the law. Local Government Code 102 requires that Capel prepares a municipal budget each year to cover the proposed expenditures of the city for the following year. In addition, the city's charter requires the city manager to prepare and submit a proposed budget to the city council. And so both the local government code and the charter require a public hearing on the budget and the notice of public hearing to be published in the city's official newspaper. The local government code states that at the conclusion of the public hearing, the governing body shall take action on the proposed budget. According to the city's charter, the proposed budgeted expenditures shall not exceed the total estimated income and unencumbered funds from the previous year. So another way to say that is that expenditures shall not exceed the total estimated revenues plus any undesignated fund balance. What type of planning documents do we prepare? So we prepare a budget and a five-year forecast. The budget covers the single fiscal year's maintenance and operations and is formally adopted by council. In addition, amendments to modify the original budget are brought to council for approval during the year. Amendments address items that arise during the year that were unknown at the time the budget was created. For example, the damage caused by the last couple of February freezes required budget amendments for those particular years. The five-year forecast is a future financial planning tool used by staff that includes current fiscal year plus four years. The document addresses both maintenance and operations as well as long-term planning regarding the improvement of infrastructure. It is updated annually and used internally to identify and address trends proactively. Next, I'll cover the phases of the budget cycle. The first phase of the budget cycle is the budget preparation. This phase begins with council retreat that's held in January. And then budgets kicked off for staff. That occurs the beginning of February with department budgets due mid-March. Department hearings with the city manager's office occur in late April. And then budget workshops with council begin in June with the Crime Control and Prevention District public hearing. And then this year, budget workshops with council begin this month. And as I mentioned, the first one is this Thursday, with the final workshop occurring on July 27th, which is directly following the city's receipt of the certified tax rule from both Dallas and Central Appraisal Districts on July 25th. The tax rate is calculated during this phase and revenue estimates are determined. The proposed budget will be brought forward for council's consideration of approval that is developed during this phase. It is the budget developed by departments, reviewed by the city manager's office, and then presented and discussed during the budget workshops with council. It's during the budget workshops that council and the public provide feedback concerning the city manager's proposed budget. At the conclusion of the budget workshops, the city manager's proposed budget becomes council's budget. The budget is required to be filed with the city secretary's office on or before August 5th, and that's by charter. The budget will be filed on August 4th this year, since August 5th is on a Saturday. The budget that's again filed on August 4th is council's budget and reflects the direction provided by council during the budget workshops. The next phase is the approval of the budget, which takes place in August. As previously mentioned, the public hearings are held on the budget and the tax rate. And I'll provide more information on the tax rate later. Right now, I'd like to just focus on the budget. This slide is showing that the budget ordinance is adopted first, and then the tax rate is adopted. And then final approval is the tax rate ratification. Adoption of a budget that would require raising more revenue from property taxes than in the previous year requires a separate vote of the governing body to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. So all three actions shown under the budget approval are scheduled to occur on August 22nd this year. The last phase is the annual audit. The audited financial statements close the fiscal year and show, among other things, a comparison of the original budget, final budget, and actual amounts of revenues and expenditures at the city. I also thought I would provide important dates during the budget process where citizens can provide input. The dates in green show each opportunity for citizens to engage in the process, learn about the budget process and provide input. And it starts with the town hall meeting in April. Next is the public meeting in June on the Crime Control Prevention District. And then continues with the budget workshops that are held in July. And then the public hearing in August. This slide also shows when the proposed budget is available for the public to review, which is August 4th this year. I thought it might also be important to you to share each fund's revenue source, as it can be confusing. For example, which funds receive property tax and which receive sales tax? As this slide shows, the General Fund receives revenue from property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, fines and forfeitures, and charges for services. Together, property tax and sales tax accounted for about 82% of the total General Fund revenue in the 2023 adopted budget. The other funds represent the Water Sewer Fund and various special revenue funds. For example, the Water Sewer Fund receives the revenue from water and sewer rates, Crime Control Prevention District, CRDC, and the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund's primary source of revenue is sales tax. Whereas the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund receives its revenue from the hotel occupancy tax received from hotels and short-term rentals. The Janey Utility District receives revenue from the stormwater fee that's shown on the water bill. And then the revenue sources of the various court special revenue funds are from court fines set by legislation, which also dictates how the revenue from those fines can be used. This next slide shows that there's other sources. This next slide shows that there's other sources of funding, and some of those sources of funding are, for example, the issuance of bonds. There's also grants, and then the ARPA funding that we received in August of '21 and August of '22. I'll elaborate a little bit more on the types of funds. So we have both general obligation and certificate of obligation bonds, and those are tax-supported, meaning that the interest in sinking or the INS portion of the property tax rate is set at the rate needed to pay the principal and interest on these bonds. Revenue bonds have been issued, that's another type of bond, and those have been issued by CRDC and the Water Sewer Fund in the past. CRDC revenue bonds are repaid with CRDC sales tax, and water and sewer revenue bonds would be paid with water and sewer revenue, which is generated through water and sewer rates. Recently, we have issued certificate of obligation bonds rather than revenue bonds for both water sewer and CRDC. And this is because when we issue certificate of obligations, they're AAA rated by the rating agencies, and the last time we issued revenue bonds, they were AA rated. So issuing the COs are still repaid by CRDC sales tax and water sewer revenue. However, issuing the COs does save us on interest costs. And for the water and sewer fund, it removes the requirement to maintain a water sewer reserve and also revenue coverage of about one and a half times the annual debt service So the next area I'd like to cover is property taxes. And so I'll begin by going over the four guiding principles of truth and taxation. And so it starts in the left-hand corner is number one, and we're going to go right to left. First, property owners have a right to know about the increase in their properties and previous payment. Next, the city must publish its no new revenue rate, tax rate, and its voter approval rate before adopting an actual tax rate. Third, if the city's adopted tax rate exceeds the voter approval rate, the city must hold an automatic election in November. And then last, the city must publish special notices, hold one public hearing before adopting the tax rate that exceeds the lower the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate. And this is a brief review of the process for determining and improving the tax rate. So first, the appraisal district provides the certified values, which are needed to calculate the tax rate. The appraisal district also sends out notices of appraised values to property owners. And then next, the tax assessor calculates the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate, and the city publishes notices regarding these tax rates. At the first council meeting in August, the governing body does vote on the maximum tax rate to propose, which will be listed in the notice of public hearing to vote on the maximum tax rate. This is not adopting the tax rate, it's simply setting the maximum tax rate that can be proposed at the council meeting to adopt the tax rate. So in August, at the same meeting that the public hearing on the budget is held, council holds a public hearing on the tax rate. And after the public hearings at this meeting, council considers approval of the ordinances setting both the budget and the tax rate. And again, that will occur on August 22nd this year. So once the tax rate is approved, the tax assessor will begin mailing property tax bills out in October. And this slide is specifically for Kevin. I've provided an overview of the property tax process, so now I'll go over the tax rate calculation. The top row of buttons on this slide shows that the total tax rate is comprised of the MNO, or the Maintenance and Operations portion, which is designated by the green button and represents revenue for the general fund. And then the INS, or the Interest in Sinking portion, which is designated by the purple button and represents revenue for the debt service fund. So the total of those is the tax rate. The second row of buttons on this slide shows the formula used to calculate the total property tax revenue to be received by the city. So it starts with the tax rate, again designated with the red button and calculated in the first row, and it takes that and multiplies it by the tax value provided by the appraisal district, which is then divided by $100, since the tax rate is per $100 of value, with the result of the equation being the total property tax revenue the city will receive. And again, remember that a portion of the total tax revenue goes to the general fund and a portion to the debt service. Also, keep in mind that your tax bill that you receive represents property taxes paid to not only the city, but to the school district and to the county. So you receive a bill that is allocated back to three different entities.
So, but the three and a half percent cap is only looking at an increase in the MNO rate, right?
Uh-huh, and we're going to get there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so before I move on to how to calculate the no new revenue and the voter approval rate, I'd like to just go over some requirements of SB 2. SB 2 went into effect in January 1st of 2020. At first, we are required to calculate the no new revenue and voter approval rates. The no new revenue rate is the rate that generates the same amount of maintenance and operations property tax revenue as in the prior year, using the same properties that were used to calculate the tax rate in the previous year. The voter approval rate is the rate that will generate no more than 3.5% increase in the MNO or Maintenance and Operation Property Tax Revenue. And so notice that the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rates impact the Maintenance and Operations portion of the property tax rate and not the INS portion of the rate. And so the INS tax rate is set at the rate needed to pay the principal and interest on payments on the outstanding bond payments. The last two points regarding SB 2 are that a mandatory November election is triggered if the MNO rate is above the voter approval rate, plus any unused increments. For example, if the city adopted a Maintenance and Operations rate that increased revenue 2% in fiscal year '22, then the city could add the remaining 1.5% to a future year without triggering an election. Also regarding the adoption of the tax rate, SB 2 requires only one public hearing on the tax rate, and that public hearing can be the same night as the adoption of the tax So this slide shows the simplified calculation of the no new revenue rate, and the actual no new revenue rate calculation is three pages long. This calculation is showing that we use the prior year Maintenance and Operations tax revenue represented by the first green circle, and we divide that by the current value of property that was taxed in the prior year. So this calculation doesn't include the value of any new construction. That amount is then multiplied by 100 because the tax rate is per $100 of value, and the result is the MNO portion of the no new revenue rate. If you then bring the MNO portion down and you add to it the INS rate to obtain the total no new revenue, no new revenue rate. And again, the INS rate is the rate necessary to generate the revenue that equals the principal and interest payments on the debt that's due that year. And so I just wanted to take a pause to remind you of the CECL effect. And so it just says that as property values increase, the no new revenue rate decreases, and as property values decrease, the no new revenue rate increases. Values stay the same, the rate stays the same. And next is the calculation to determine the voter approval tax rate. Again, this slide shows a simplified calculation. The calculation is another three pages long. Then there's another three pages of calculations to review for various adjustments to both the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. If you'd like to see the actual calculation, it can be found in the, it's the last pages in the budget book, and so it has the several pages there. So as you can see, the voter approval rate starts with the no new revenue Maintenance and Operations rate that we calculated two slides back, and it increases it by 3.5%. It then adds the interest in sinking or the INS rate and any unused increments from previous years to determine the voter approval rate. And this is the rate that would trigger an election on the tax rate if we went at or above this. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So we're still ultimately hit in an increasing yield environment in terms of determining whether we have an election. To the extent that any newly floated bonds have a higher yield, right, then they would have a higher cost, so it would factor into getting us closer to 3.5%.
No. Because the trigger for the 3.5% is only on the MNO.
Right.
So...
But you're still adding the cost of the bonds to...
But the no new revenue rate and voter approval rate only focus on Maintenance and Operations, and that piece can't, Maintenance and Operations can't increase more than 3.5%. The INS can be set wherever it needs to be set, but the Maintenance and Operations can only increase. So they're limiting your general fund increase to 3.5%, but allowing your interest in sinking to be wherever it needs to be to pay your debt payments.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. Thank you.
We are coming up on 7:30 right now. Thank you. Anybody have any pressing questions for Kim? We're going to be seeing a lot of her over the next couple of months, so it's good.
And I'm available if you do have questions and want to meet with me separately to explore it.
I'll take my bomb 101 offline.
Mike, how do you want to do your...
I have it real simple. Things are just costing more. You have the memo, and it shows what's happening, knowing that the time has run out. And you see, for those that have been on the council, we went through a phase before where we're adding 1.5% per month on our capital projects. We are back in that mode again, so that's why you're seeing the price increases. That's my presentation. You have the various information as far as the different projects.
And you're available after hours to discuss.
I'm available. Anytime to talk about inflation.
Anybody have any questions? All right. The time is 7:32, and we're going to adjourn from work session. We will move into the regular meeting of the Capel City Council and the council chambers
Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 7:34 PM. We have adjourned from work session, and we're going to be moving into the regular session of the Capel City Council at 7:40 PM. Thank you. Thank you.
May each one become a brilliant star. May each one become beautiful in color and redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind Father, comfort thy blessings, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just council. O Lord, comfort upon them thy heavenly bounty and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor, that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge their duties with honesty and ability. Thou art the powerful, thou art the giver, thou art the beneficent.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Item number five is a proclamation, and I'd like to invite Shunavash Chilakuri to come forward with his guest.
Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has been an unprecedented human tragedy that has exasperated psychological suffering and mental health problems, and whereas people around the world embrace yoga to fight social isolation and depression during this pandemic, and whereas the essence of yoga is balance, not just the balance within the body or that between the mind and the body, but also the balance in the human relationship with the world. Whereas yoga emphasizes the values of mindfulness, moderation, discipline, and perseverance, and whereas in keeping with the spirit, the theme for this year's Yoga Day celebration is Yoga for Humanity. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capella, do hereby designate June 21st, 2023, as Yoga Day. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of Capella to be affixed this 11th day of July 2023. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Item number six is a report and debrief by the city manager on the Village Parkway Pump Station. Mr. Lann.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, I just want to go over the events associated with June 28th and 29th, where we had to issue a boil water notice. Prior to getting into that, I want to give you a little background on the City of Capella's water system, because I think it's important for us to all understand how that works. You can't hear me?
Thank you.
I'll talk louder. How about that?
We're good.
Okay. All right. The City of Capella purchases all potable water treated and ready for distribution from Dallas Water Utilities. The city receives the treated water at the Village Parkway Pump Station via a single 36-inch water line that is within the Sandy Lake Road right-of-way. The water distribution system includes two elevated storage tanks, 1.5 million and 2.0 million gallons respectively, 200 miles of water main, two ground storage tanks totaling 10 million gallons, and the Village Parkway Pump Station, six pumps, four large, two smaller. Using these facilities, we purchase and pump more than 3 billion gallons of water annually. The Village Parkway Pump Station has a design capacity of 40 million gallons per day, calculated without the city's largest pump in service. However, the city is currently purchasing no more than 18.5 million gallons per day. That's important because in the past, as you know, we've sent out notices, especially in August, to help conserve water, to have our folks reduce their irrigation, because that's when we start bumping up to that 18.5 million. If we were to exceed that amount, then our costs would go up just from a contractual standpoint with Dallas Water Utilities. On an average summer day, the city pumps approximately 14 to 16 million gallons per day. The city's peak demand during the summer occurs between 4:00 AM and 8:00 AM, and it's important to remember that. With the current configuration, the pumps running from the backup power during peak usage are not able to keep up with demand. Water pressure is provided primarily through the elevations in the elevated water tanks. The Village Parkway Pump Station was built in 1990 with four pumps and one ground storage tank, and was expanded again in 1995 with two additional pumps and an additional ground storage tank. There are two primary electrical feeds to the pump station from Encore, one from River Chase feed, the other from MacArthur feed. Multiple times a year, power is lost to one or both of these feeds for various reasons. The most recent large-scale power outage occurred during winter storm Uri. Both feeds were lost multiple times over a two-day period, with the longest being eight hours. This was during the winter. The backup generator was engaged, and the city was able to keep water pressure up in the entire time because water usage is minimal during the winter months, actually probably less than half what is compared to the summer months. When the pump station was built, the system was designed with two power feeds and reliance on a portable backup generator that must be engaged manually. The backup generator issue has been a concern for quite some time for us, and in 2017, the Public Works Department started exploring engineering solutions to address this issue. Some may recall there was a proposed project referred to as the Star Leaf Pump Station. This would have been a second pump station that still relied on the single feed from Dallas Water Utilities for its water source. Early cost estimates in 2017 for the pump station solution totaled $16 million. In 2018, the engineering staff began exploring multiple avenues to address challenges to the city's water system. First, where and how to access secondary water sources specifically in case of the loss of water connectivity from Dallas Water Utilities. And secondly, improve redundancy backup generation at the Village Parkway Pump Station. Regarding additional water resources. Regarding access to additional water resources for emergency purposes, the city has entered into interlocal agreements with Grapevine and Lewisville, and is in discussions with two other regional partners. Work on the two interconnects, which the council has previously approved, is in progress, with construction expected to be complete within the next 12 months. So that addresses the redundancy from a water source standpoint for emergency purposes. The design and procurement of a permanent generator at the Village Parkway Pump Station. Regarding the design and construction of a new backup generator to the pump station, the city awarded the design to Gupta and Associates on July 14th, 2020. Bids for the system were awarded on October 26th, 2021, to Clark Electric in the amount of $1.7 million. The project was scheduled to be completed in 270 days. The scope of the project included the supply and installation of a new standby permanent generator and the necessary configurations between the generator and the Village Parkway Pump Station. The current configuration of the manual backup generators, the temporary generators, I'm going to call temporary generator one and temporary generator two, are 460 volts voltage and can support pumps five and six, which are the two small pumps, which are 5 million gallons each. The first backup generator and the second backup generator have always been required to be manually started. The new permanent generator is 4,160 voltage and can run a variety of pump configurations and will start automatically if the River Chase feed is lost. So what was the progress on construction? After construction started, the city was informed by the contractor that there were long lead times on supply for generators and switchgear due to supply chain issues caused by COVID-19, and specifically in Texas, the increased demand for generators resulting from the 2021 winter storm Uri event. The initial date submitted by the supplier contract for delivery of the permanent generator was not until December of 2022. Then the delivery date was extended to February of 2023 due to delays, and which I had come to counsel in January of '23 and informed you of the changes, and the generator enclosure vendor. In January of '23, the supplier informed the city that the generator enclosure was having problems and would not be able to ship the enclosure until 2024. City staff informed the supplier and the contractor that alternatives must be pursued. The supplier found another vendor that was able to deliver the enclosure sooner, and the generator was estimated then to be delivered in June of 2023. In May of 2023, the supplier informed the city that the delivery of the generator enclosure would be delayed for another month, and the generator would be delivered to the city by the end of July 2023, which is still the case. In addition to the delays associated with the generator, the contractor experienced several delays beginning in December of 2022 with the delivery of switch equipment, as well as additional delays with the installations of the switch equipment due to condition of some of the support infrastructure wiring at the pump station, which was not included in this phase of the overhaul. Finally, there were coordination issues that had to be resolved between Encore and the contractor to set up a new meter for the new permanent generator and energizing the secondary feed. The River Chase feed, when needed, due to power loss to the system's primary MacArthur feed, has to go through the switch equipment to supply power to the Village Parkway Pump Station. The operation of the switch equipment is designed to automatically toggle between the River Chase feed and the new permanent generator. When the pump station loses the River Chase feed, the switchgear diverts to the permanent generator. When power returns to the switch generator, return power supplies back to the River Chase feed. Bypassing the River Chase feed from the switch equipment is not possible due to the automatic functionality needs of the system. While the previously described switch equipment issues were in play, for the switch equipment to be installed and tested as part of the backup generator project, the River Chase feed for the pump station was required to be offline as part of the construction project. With the continued delivery delays, this added one more layer to the why when the River Chase feed was taken offline six to eight weeks ago. Before the power failure on June 28th, staff was working with Encore and internal procurement staff to install the new meter for River Chase feed, which was the last step to activate the feed. Encore, because of the emergency, installed the new meter on June 28th and energized the River Chase feed. The contractor activated the switchgear on June 29th, and the River Chase feed is currently active and passing through the switchgear to supply power to the pump station. So here's the timeline. On the 28th, at 3:31, a utility pole was knocked down on MacArthur, and electrical service to the pump station was lost. At 4:00 AM, water operations staff arrived on site to manually start the backup generator. At 5:00, a second backup generator was ordered as a precautionary measure. At 7:20, the backup generator connection to the two smaller pumps overheated, causing the generator to stop working. After a few minutes, the backup generator was restarted, but it was only capable of running one pump as a result of the damage to the connection to one of the two smaller pumps. Due to water demand, one pump could not maintain the system pressure. Thus, at 8:30, the second backup generator was connected in place of the first and began running. Again, only one pump was able to run as a result of the damage to the lead for the second pump. So at 8:35, the boil water notice was issued because of the reduction in pressure below 20 PSI in parts of the system. The TCEQ requires notification if the system's pressure drops below 20 PSI. In comparison, PSI ranges average between 50 and 70 PSI daily in the system. At 11:15, power was finally restored, the pumps were turned back on, and pressure began to rise above 20 PSI throughout the system, and the towers began to fill. At 12:15, continuous pressure above 50 PSI was throughout the city. Staff began flushing the system to prepare to take the required samples. At 4 o'clock, water samples were submitted to the TRI lab for testing, because there is an 18-hour test that has to be passed in order for us to lift the boil water notice. At 10:22 AM on Thursday morning, water samples test results returned and requirements met, so the boil water notice was lifted. During that entire time, staff was providing notifications to the residents and businesses in the community. There was a lot of information that was flowing out. One of the things that, and the mayor brought this to my attention, some folks were not receiving the calls or the texts. We have a meeting with Everbridge on Friday to figure out why that was happening, because as the mayor indicated, on the same day, that afternoon, he started receiving the text. So we don't know what it is in the Everbridge system. That's why we have to meet with them to find out exactly what the notification process was, how it was working or how it was not working. So, Mayor and Council, that concludes what it was a very stressful period of time for a lot of people. And, you know, we had no pallets of water at about 8:30 AM, and by 9 o'clock that night, we had 91 pallets of water delivered. About 40 of them had been distributed to our residents that afternoon, and so thank you for being able to come out, for those that were able to come out and help. And just happy to, happy, I'm here to answer questions. I don't know if I'm happy to answer questions on the situation, but I'm here to ask questions. And if there's something that you ask me and I don't have an answer to, I have our deputy city manager here, Kent, who is an engineer, who might be able to do a better job of answering a technical question. So, that's the report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And as Mike indicated, my household was one that did not get notification, and if the city manager hadn't called me at 7:10 AM to alert me to a citywide problem, I would never have known. So thank you for the phone call. But anyway. Council, any questions for Mike? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, but can you repeat that one more time?
I'd be happy to.
I was out of town, and I saw the post, and you guys did a great job. And just want to say, you know, thank you to the staff for the effort and everyone that was out there volunteering to distribute the water and bring the situation to a calmer situation than it could have been worse. So, yeah, thanks for your work.
I'd like to add that when everything started being distributed, you know, people had smiles on their faces, considering it was a really, really hot day. Our residents responded really favorably across the board, and we're very thankful for that. And I think we put the word out, but I don't know if y'all noticed during that period of time, and it's, you know, I don't want to say this other than, other cities were having boil water notices going on at the time because there were different situations happening. And in particular, the City of Commerce reached out, and they had a single line over a river that completely failed, and they had to, they had no water in their system. And we were able to send, I think, 40 pallets over the next two days over to Commerce, and they are extremely appreciative, and I think the mayor had heard back from the mayor as well. So the water, the water was put to good use in our community, and the water was very helpful to another community in the state as well.
helpful to another community in the state as well.
The mayor of Commerce extended, he was in a little bit of stress when he wrote his note, but that was understandable. He wrote a very short note thanking us for supporting his community. So as Mike said, he was, they were in a significantly worse shape than we had ever been in. Councilmember Nevels.
Mike, I just want to thank you for taking time to, to explain to all the citizens the timeline. I know there was a, you know, I just wanted to, to thank the, the staff for getting out the information as quickly as they're possible, as they, as they could. Understand, you know, we, it's important to make sure we've got all the right information going out and stuff like that. So I want to thank you and your team for getting the information out to our citizens as quick as possible. You know, obviously, you know, no one wants to go without basic needs like water, but I'd have to say, just from my personal interactions with citizens, you know, everybody was pretty understanding that, you know, sometimes things do happen and they were so appreciative of city staff, the communication response that, that was received, everybody out with the smiling faces in, in the hot weather, as you said, you know, trying to get water out to the citizens. So what I, what I think I took away from the most was that, you know, people were so happy to live in this community where people are willing to roll up their sleeves and help out their, their neighbors and their friends to, you know, get those resources they need. So I just want to thank you and the entire staff and the entire city of Capel for coming together. And this is an event that it's really easy to point fingers and, and, you know, just shake them in people's faces and say, you should have done this or you should have done that. But the mentality was is that people came together, they rallied together and they were helping out their fellow citizens. And I'm just really proud of our community for having that mentality. So thank you for leading the charge, you know, to give people the resources they needed.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, mayor. Just sort of reiterating a little bit what Councilman John and Councilman Nevels have said, thank you to you and staff. And thank you for the summary of how complicated a system, a public water system is, even for a community our size and helping everybody understand all the things that go into it and not to mention a little bit of a perfect storm that happened with a lot of the construction and supplies, the supply chain delays and everything. So shedding some light on that is great. I will reiterate what you said about staff. So I showed up at the library 4 o'clock to help dispense water. I did not sense anyone that was upset or unhappy about being there. In fact, I know a lot of the staff, not all the staff was there, but a lot of them were volunteering to be there. They'd already gone home for the day because we had all our facilities closed, but they were volunteering to be there to help this community and they were doing it with a smile on their face. And I think that is a testament to the culture that has been built in this community. And so thank you for that also. And then the other thing I'll, my two big things about what basic services that a city should provide and it is public works and public safety. So as we continue, as you, as y'all continue to debrief on what happened or what needs to happen or even identifying new things that we need to put resources to, to fortify our public works or our public safety, I would hope you would never hesitate to come and ask us for additional resources for those, those two things. Because those are, those are, those are the, some of the fundamental things that a city does. And I think the city with your contingency plan did a great job on, on that day a few weeks ago. So thank you very much for all that.
So I found it very reassuring. By the time I got past the point of worrying about what the May's household was going to do that morning, the city had already put their entire emergency management plan into effect. All of that water was already on order and all of the, the timeframe for all of the volunteers to work was already being set. And this is before I had even gotten around to thinking about what was going to happen to the city. So that, that was a testament to the pre-planning that this city has done for itself. So, you know, the next time that we hear a request for a, a backup generator for something, we probably will be a little bit more accommodating. So thank you very much, Mike. Council, any, any other? Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, mayor. Mike, thank you for the update with the timeline. I also want to thank you for your leadership and your staff did a wonderful job during this crisis. I know I'm proud of our citizens as well. They came together and understood what was happening and they sent me some notes on, you know, how well the staff did, you know, fabulous job during this crisis. I do have a question. Can you speak generally about our infrastructure, the critical infrastructure we have and the backup system we have? How often we test that? And yeah.
All of the generators that we have in place are tested on a regular basis, whether it's weekly or monthly. The, the automated systems, as far as the testing is concerned, if anything is identified as a potential problem, we're notified and then we are able to provide any particular maintenance on that. You know, excuse me, our facilities folks are constantly out all the time looking at our generators. You know, they, I think this one tests every Wednesday or Thursday every week just for town hall as an example. As far as the, the generators that, from a public safety standpoint, they're at all our fire stations. They're at all our major facilities, public facilities. Some just power up things like air conditioning and, and heating. Some power up the entire operation like at town hall. So each one is kind of designed and that's the interesting thing about, I didn't say this, but the, to some folks who thought, well, we could just run down to Home Depot and get a generator for the Village Parkway pump station, right? And I'm saying that with a smile on my face. You know, the systems are designed specifically to meet those particular needs of that particular building. I mean, Councilmember Hill can address, you know, that. So each one of the buildings has a different need and the generators are designed to meet those needs. So they're tested on a regular basis, they're maintained on a regular basis and our, our crew, our staff, facility staff does a great job of looking after that. In this case, when I mentioned the generator itself did not necessarily fail. So when we were, so when you're in the moment, you're getting the information, right? And I think I was saying, okay, backup generator burned up. I think that's what I said. Well, we found out through the process of debriefing that actually what happened was the connection between the generator and the Village Parkway pump station is what failed. And so we were able to get the generator back online, but it could only go to the one pump. And that's when we were, so if you, if you can imagine being on the call, we're being, everything is tracking okay, we're, we're doing fine. And up to about 7:30, that's when the first failure happened. And then that's, remember at 5 o'clock, we had ordered the other generator. Well, getting the other generator was fine, but what failed was a, was basically the connection. And so we lost that second pump because we could not make that connection anymore. And NEMA 3 is our team that we work with. They were on site, Encore was on site. That was not something that could just be fixed like that. So that's why we ran into the issue that we did as far as losing the pressure.
So the custom, the generator that we ordered. When did you say, when are we going to get that?
Supposedly July 24, I think we have a date, but it's the end of this month. It was supposed to be delivered in December, which was, if, you know, if you recall, I mentioned that the contract actually called for 270 days. And as the contractor got into the project, because of COVID, because of the, with Yuri, it just, everything just got thrown off as far as the, the, the delivery dates for the work.
At what time did we have the power back?
11:15, I think it was. So that's why we were able to get the system back up and right. And the majority of people in the community, while they had less pressure, there, there was still water in the system. It just wasn't pressurized. It wasn't above the 20 PSI. And it started on the west side as far as losing the, if you will, call it losing the pressure and worked its way. If you lived on the east side, you may not even notice that you didn't have pressure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the summary and I'm, we're still going to be, I'm going to be personally interested in seeing what happened to our notification system, but I'm sure we'll get that one working too. So, you know, we all learn from our mistakes and we all learn from events and this was the first time in, what, 35 years that anything like this has happened and it's a, it's a tremendous compliment to the, to you and your staff that it was handled so well and so seamlessly. So thank you. Okay. Item number seven on our agenda is citizens' appearance and persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations shall be limited to two minutes each and individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they have signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker should be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual group or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and make the request to the mayor and council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes. We do have one speaker signed up to speak for our citizens' appearance tonight and that's Dave Shoff.
Good evening, mayor, councilman and city manager. My name is Dave Shoff, 215 Westwind Drive, Capel, and I'd like to preemptively ask for the extra two minutes. I might go over a few seconds if that's okay.
I believe we're good with that.
Okay, thank you. Ahead of the budget meeting starting this week, I believe there are still some issues to be addressed to still more fairly and equitably allocate water and related billing issues. My purpose is to advocate for three categories when making budgetary decisions and in this case, in regard to water sewer billing and related areas for the city to address and an overall restructuring of this type of revenue stream. First and most obvious, the budget should be made with the goal of responsibly financing service or need. Secondly, the funding should be based on fair and equitable billing, which is one of my main points. Third, in the case of water, the assessment should also be made with the purpose of encouraging conservation and environmental sensitivities by consumers. The two immediate areas of concern are eliminating the funding of the stormwater drainage system by assessing added fees to the monthly water bill and revising the tier structure for water usage billing. The current stormwater surcharge is scheduled to be increased to $5 per month in the near future, which in essence will result in the equivalent of adding another month's water bill over the course of a year. Obtaining revenue by added fees or surcharges disproportionately makes smaller households and senior citizens bear more of the burden of the cost. The main problem with this is the stormwater drainage is not a service, it is a basic infrastructure. This should be funded by property tax revenue in order to be fair and equitable. I also believe the basic water service charge should be reduced and more revenue raised by billing for actual volume used and at an increasingly higher rate for higher usages and especially for excessive consumption. I would suggest going from the current three-tier structure to a five-tier structure to accomplish this. This would again be a fairer and more equitable billing scheme, which would not impact the smaller households nearly as much. In addition, the higher usage rate charges for higher consumption would greatly encourage conservation of water and/or penalize extreme consumption of this valuable resource, lessening the risk to the city of facing threshold penalties. In conclusion, I'll be leaving a copy of this with the city secretary, which she can make copies for everybody that's interested. And I'm also attaching some deep, more detail that I presented at the January meeting because this is more or less a summary of what I did there. And finally, as an added comment, I believe the city water billing department has all the data needed as well as a highly competent staff in order to determine appropriate schedule rates and/or programs to obtain the three goals I named. It's not rocket science, it's just math. That being said, I would question the value of spending tens of thousands of dollars hiring any outside consultants to accomplish these goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Tonight, we only have four items on the consent agenda. Council, is there any comments or questions or desire to pull? Councilmember Walker.
I guess just a clarification for my benefit and for the benefit of those watching. So, you know, after a lot of deliberation, lengthy presentations, you know, we voted on the Kroger fuel station and I was one of the people voting against it. But as I understand it, what we're voting on tonight is simply approving the ordinance that memorializes the vote that's already been taken. So I can approve the ordinance because it comports with all the requirements and the conditions that were voted upon. With, and, and I'm not taking an inconsistent position at all by virtue of my prior negative vote. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. You're basically approving the verbiage.
Thank you.
That was agreed upon by the previous council action.
Thank you very much, mayor. That concludes my question.
Good point, thank you. We overlook that sometimes. Seeing no comment, I will accept the motion. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve item number eight, items A through D.
Thank you. And a second by Councilmember Nevels, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor and none opposed to motion carries.
All right, we have a couple of public hearings coming up and I'm going to make one statement for all of them. Persons wishing to speak during the public hearings must sign the register and list their address. You will be called to speak in the order that you have registered and public hearings are limited to five minutes per speaker. Mr. Steer, looks like he's ready to go, so I will open the public hearings and ask him to read item number nine into the record.
Thank you, mayor. Council, good evening. This is item number nine this evening. It is a public hearing. It's to consider approval of a zoning change request from PD 295 HC to PD 295 R4 HC to approve a detailed site plan for a Popeyes Chicken sit-down drive-through restaurant on .97 acres of property located on the south side of State Highway 121 between Freeport Parkway and Northwestern Drive. In 2019, the city council approved a concept plan for a gas station, hotel, retail, restaurants and office uses on 8.6 acres and a detailed site plan for a QT convenience store with gas pumps running on Freeport Parkway. The QT gas station has since been constructed. In August of 2020, city council approved a detailed site plan for 73,000 square foot Sheraton Four Points Hotel, which has not yet been constructed. And then at the beginning of 2023, Popeyes had submitted for a restaurant and later withdrew their application to reexamine their site layout when Star, Starbucks had withdrawn their project. The original proposal showed a focal point area depicted in green that contained a linear park that went down the center of the site and connected the QT site to the, to the now hotel site. This area would be amenitized and one of the PD conditions will require that the details of the focal point area require staff approval and shall be in place with the development of the buildings on the eastern portion of the property. Property itself will need to be replatted to align with the proposal and prior to any permits granted for construction. Tonight's agenda has two restaurant users. First is the Popeyes, of course. The existing driveway from State Highway 121 Frontage Road will serve as the main entrance to the site. As the rest of the block develops, additional driveways, access easements and fire lanes will connect the different developments on the site. The site will have a sit-down component as well as a drive-through. There are two drive-through lanes proposed with approximately six stacking spaces each. The building itself will be 2,500 square feet. There are 26 parking spaces proposed. Majority of the parking spaces will be located interior to the site with 12 parking spaces on the State Highway 121 frontage side. An access road to the rear of the site will provide additional access and connection and circulation. The double drive-through does put a slight curve in the access road in, towards the rear of the site. And the main difference in this proposal from the previous one is the elimination of the extra drive between the two sites on the northeast property line. The site is less than two acres and thus requires a minimum of 30% landscaping onsite, which can include up to 5% enhanced paving. State Highway 121 Frontage has a landscape area that's approximately 22 feet in depth. Additional landscaping is provided surrounding the drive-through area along the main drive separating this site from the proposed Tim Hortons and the proposed hotel. Approximately 25 overstory trees will be planted on the side. Approximately 25 overstory trees will be planted on the site. Additional shrubs, ground cover will line the landscape areas around the entire site. All the landscape requirements have been met with this proposal. The building itself will be approximately 2,500 square feet, as mentioned, and it will be rectangular in shape. The materials will be a combination of brick, EFS, Niche Haw fiber cement designed to look like vintage wood with a storefront, excuse me, storefront frame. One of the bricks is Royal Burke Dale and matches the one to be used on the Tim Hortons, and the other brick matches the accent brick on the QT, so that the buildings will complement one another. They are requesting a variance to the allowable building signage area. Typically, the allowable building signage is calculated at one square foot of signage for each linear foot of front facade. In this case, the front facade is approximately 35 feet wide. They are requesting to use a side elevation, which is 84 linear feet for this calculation. A similar request was previously approved for Hat Creek Burger. The sign area would be spread out to allow for their logo on the front of the building, which is 40 square feet, and another sign along the drive-through elevation, which is 14.5 square feet, and a smaller sign, which is eight square feet along the other side entrance, for a total of 62.3 square feet. The monument sign proposed is 22 square feet with a brick base that will match the building. They did submit some additional signage, which includes a directional sign, eight-foot monument and clearance pole that did not meet city ordinance, and staff will require that all other signage meets the city ordinances. We sent out two notices within 200 feet, three courtesy notices within 800 feet. We received no responses either in favor or opposition. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request with the following conditions: that, number one, there may be additional comments during the detailed engineering review; two, a plat will be required showing the revised fire lanes and easements; and then, number three, the PD conditions will read A: to allow the attached building signage of 62.3 square feet, as shown on the elevations; B: that all other signage shall comply with city regulations; C: the brick on the trash enclosure shall match the brick on the building and have a pedestrian opening; D: plans for the linear park shall require staff approval; and E: future sidewalk to be constructed by a property owner when deemed necessary by the city engineer. That concludes my presentation. The applicants and the audience, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council, any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a clarification, and I think you answered it for me actually a while ago. It's in this one, and it's also in the next public hearing, but plans for the linear park. The linear park is that area that was in green behind the two buildings, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, that condition just means, has that not been designed yet? Is that not?
It has not been designed, it's just been shown conceptually.
I got it, okay. I just, I saw that originally, wasn't sure what it was referring to, but that makes sense. Thanks.
Councilmember Neves?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Steer. Just a question about the signage. You said that a similar signage variance was granted to Hat Creek, so specifically, is that using the, you know, the side elevation or?
Yes, sir.
Linear versus the front?
Yes.
Just because it's a long, narrow building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So, and just to be clear, we're allowing the orange because that is an actual logo, correct?
Yes, that's a U.S. Patent Trademark Association logo.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
Thanks so much for that, Matt. Hey, on the linear park, though, why is that included in the PD conditions if it, that would be an obligation of the landowner, right, and not the tenant?
Yes, and the landowner was part of this application.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a, the applicants in the office, or in the office, in the audience. You also signed up to speak as part of the public hearing, so was that just because you were part of the applicant, or do you have anything you'd like to say to us? And since you signed up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903 Central Drive. I put that just for the record for the secretary, because sometimes I talk fast and she didn't have to write down my name and address. Matt did a fantastic job with our presentation. Like I said, we're back here again. Popeyes was excited to come, then Starbucks kind of went away, and here we are back with Tim Horton. I am here tonight representing both Popeyes and Eric Hawke, who is the property owner, Mr. Walker. I know you were in question about that. Mr. Hawke is aware of the back parcel and that linear park obligation, and we've been kind of working on that. As soon as the grading to tie all that back stuff in is solved on that final piece right there, we'll be able to tie all this in and essentially go from the hotel all the way down to QT and have that linear connection between. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions? Councilmember Neves?
I just want to make sure I don't step on anybody's toes, but I'd like to move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item Nine with conditions.
Thank you, and seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Since you cut that one a little short, I am going to ask, is there any other discussion? Council, Mayor Protem John, June, sorry. I'm going to get you, I'll get it straight.
It'll work.
About, well, about nine, 11 months into it, I'll get it straight, so.
That'll work.
Matt, I just had a quick question about this future possible sidewalk. If it does go, where would that be?
That would be along the 121 Frontage Road.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 10 is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and once again ask Mr. Steer to read it into the record.
Okay, thank you. This is item number 10 this evening. It's to consider approval of a zoning change request from PD 295 HC to PD 295 R5 HC to approve a detailed site plan for a Tim Hortons restaurant and drive-through on .76 acres of property located on the south side of State Highway 121 between Freeport Parkway and Northwestern Drive southwest of the QT. This is the second restaurant site on your agenda tonight. This is part of the concept plan we just looked at with Popeyes. At the beginning of 2023, Starbucks had submitted a restaurant here and later withdrew their application. The new application is for Tim Hortons. Tim Hortons is a coffee shop and a bakery originating in Canada in the 1960s with over 5,000 locations worldwide. This is one of the first locations here in Texas. They have a couple of locations down south in Houston and Katy. The existing driveway from State Highway 121 Frontage Road will serve as the main entrance to the site. As the rest of the block develops, additional driveways, access easements, fire lanes will connect the different developments on the site, as stated with the Popeyes. The site will have a sit-down and drive-through component, and there's a double drive-through lane proposed. The building itself will be approximately 1,600 square feet and have 17 parking spaces. The majority of those parking spaces will be located on the State Highway 121 Frontage Side, and will require a variance, since the AC district requires no more than 50% of the parking be located in the front yard. The remaining six parking spaces are located alongside the building. An access road to the rear of the site would provide additional connection and circulation. The site is less than two acres and thus requires the minimum 30% landscape area on-site, which can include up to 5% enhanced paving. The State Highway 121 Frontage has a landscape area that's approximately 22 feet in depth, similar to Popeyes. Additional landscaping is provided surrounding the drive-through area along the main drive separating this site from the proposed Popeyes restaurant. Approximately 23 trees will be planted on the site, and additional shrubs and ground cover will line the landscape areas around the entire site. All the landscape requirements have been met. The building will be a combination of brick, Niche Haw, and EFS with storefront frame. The materials will match that of Popeyes. Large windows will also make up the front portion, and a black metal canopy will also accentuate the drive-through pickup portion of the building. As proposed, the wall signage will require a variance to the allowable building signage area, which is calculated at one square foot of signage for each linear foot of front facade, the same request that was previously approved for Hat Creek and was previously approved for Popeyes. In this case, the front facade is approximately 33 feet wide. They're requesting to use a side elevation, which is 50 linear feet for this calculation, to allow for a 50-square-foot sign, as shown. No other wall signage is proposed for the building, and all other signage would need to comply with the city's zoning requirements. The monument sign is proposed to be 22 square feet with brick framing, an aluminum Tim Hortons logo sign with ground lights, and the brick will match the brick on the building. It will be the same style as the Popeyes. And we sent out two notices within 200 feet, three courtesy notices within 800 feet. We had no responses either in favor or opposition. Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request with the following conditions: that, number one, there may be additional comments during the detailed engineering review; two, a plat will be required showing the revised fire lanes and easements; three, the PD conditions will read: to allow the attached building signage of 49.8 square feet, as shown on the elevations; B: all other signage shall comply with city regulations; C: plans for the focal point/linear park shall require staff approval; D: parking shall be allowed in the front yard, as shown; E: the brick on the trash enclosure shall match the brick on the building and have a pedestrian opening; and F: future sidewalk to be constructed by property owner when deemed necessary by the city engineer. That concludes my presentation, the applicants and the audience. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Steer? Seeing none, Mr. Christie?
Good evening, again, Council. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903 Central Drive. This is, Matt, again, did a great job on the presentation. I don't have a whole lot to add to that, other than the fact that I will let you know that these two developments are going to be a partnership together. They're going to look like they're going to be together, and the same group is actually going to own and manage and develop both of those. So, the CSM group is going to have both of those. They are also the folks that have the Tim Hortons down in Houston. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I believe we're questioning it out. Thank you very much. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item number 10 with conditions as presented.
Thank you very much. Have a second from Councilmember Hill. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on, items 11, 12, and 13 are going to be opened, they are public hearings. We're going to open those as a public hearing and hear those together. So, I open the public hearing for items 11, 12, and 13. Mr. Steer, you're going to be spoken out by the end of the evening. If you would read these into the record, please.
Yes, okay. So, the first of the items is item number 11, which is to consider approval of text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 35, accessory structure regulations, removing the verbiage of required materials and exception thereto, allowing for pool cabanas with a three-quarter bath, workshops with a half-bath, and other accessory structures with a utility sink or three-quarter bath, specifically prohibiting sleeping chambers in all accessory buildings, amending the minimum setbacks and maximum heights of accessory structures, amending the verbiage from pool liner to pool shell, and revising carport regulations, approving an ordinance for the same, and authorizing the mayor to sign. The next one is to consider text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 31-32, off-street loading spaces, all districts, amending the off-street parking requirements for kindergartens, day schools, and similar child training and care establishments, allowing for three parking spaces in lieu of the required circular drive, approving an ordinance for the same, and authorizing the mayor to sign. The next is to consider approval of text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 29B2, provisions for business zoning districts, increasing the maximum allowable attached building sign area from .5 square feet to 1 square feet per aggregate linear foot of frontage for tenants with multiple facades that face two public streets, approving an ordinance for the same, and authorizing the mayor to sign. There are several changes proposed for the accessory structure/carport ordinance. The first change will allow for pool cabanas to have a three-quarter bath, which is a toilet, sink, and a shower; a workshop to have a half-bath, which is a toilet and a sink; and all other accessory structures to have a utility sink or a three-quarter bath. They cannot have both, and they cannot contain a cooking area. The ordinance will still specify that the building shall not be constructed to be occupiable as a residence and cannot be an accessory dwelling unit. This will prevent multiple dwelling units from being constructed without the proper zoning in place. The current requirements only allow for hand sinks in accessory buildings. The next set of changes apply to accessory structures that are less than 150 square feet in size. The rear yard setbacks will be as follows: three feet minimum, one adjacent to an alley, and this is consistent with the current regulation; five feet minimum, one adjacent to another property, that's currently required to be 10 feet. We found with comparison city research that they are all less than 10 feet, the majority are less than 10 feet. And then, 10 feet minimum when backing onto a public street, and this currently in our ordinance has to match the front yard setback of the respective district, which is typically 25 to 30 feet. Side yard setbacks, excuse me, I'll go back, side yard setbacks are three feet minimum unless adjacent to a side street, which would be 10 feet proposed. This is currently at 15 feet. This would allow for an accessory structure to be located in the side yard, provided there's a distance of 10 feet between the accessory structure to the main structure on an adjacent property. Currently, if located in the side yard, they need to meet the same minimum side yard setbacks of the main structure. The maximum height will now be 12 feet, and that's measured from grade plane to the peak, which is a change from the current 10-feet maximum height requirement, which is currently measured from grade to a certain point of the roof, depending on the roof type. This change will clear up any confusion for residents. The next set of changes are proposed for accessory structures that are 150 square feet or greater. The maximum height is proposed to be 16 feet rather than the current 12 feet. The rear yard will be 10 feet. This will remain true even when the rear yard is adjacent to a public street, as opposed to the current requirement to match the front yard setback requirement. The side yard will be the same as the required setback for the main structure unless it's adjacent to a street side yard. The setback will be 15 feet in those instances, and there's no change from the current ordinance. The accessory structure must be 10 feet from the main structure on an adjacent property in any situation. The final proposed changes applies to carports. Currently, carports setback requirements are grouped together with other accessory structure regulations. Staff is proposing to create a section just for carports to make regulations easier to read and understand. In our initial briefing to City Council, staff was proposing only allowing the rear alley access to carports. Due to some feedback we received, we reconsidered, and in the amendments that we brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we included carports with side and rear alley access, unintentionally excluding carports that were in the rear and side yards of the residents that aren't accessed off of an alley, and these have now been included within the current proposal. The proposed rear yard setback is five feet rather than the current 20 feet. The 20 feet makes it prohibitive to have a carport in most instances here in the city. Side yard setbacks will match the requirement for the main structure unless it's a street side yard. In those instances, the side yard setback will be required to be 15 feet. Carports must be a minimum of 10 feet from the main structure on an adjacent property unless it's a duplex or an attached townhouse. unless it's a duplex or an attached townhouse. In those instances, no separation is required at the common property line. The maximum height is proposed to be sixteen feet, and that's measured from grade plane to the highest portion of the structure. On the left is the instance of a carport where no alley exists, and this would be required to meet the same minimum side yard setback as the main structure and ensure that it's no closer than ten feet to the main structure on the adjacent property. On the right is the instance of the side alley access. This would be required to meet the same setback as the main structure on the side yard. The five-foot rear yard setback would also apply, similar to the other accessory structures. On the one on the right, it's typically, in current ordinance, required to be setback twenty feet. The next ordinance amendment relates to parking for daycares. This ordinance affects the typical daycare facilities where circular drive is required, allowing for parents to drop off their child at the front door of the building. Many of these circular drives also provided a poor cachet that vehicles drove through and stopped at the front door to unload their children. Barance to the circular driver requirement have been requested in the past and granted. These proposed changes allow for those who wish to continue to provide a circular drive to do so, and those that don't want one or don't have room for one to provide three additional parking spaces near the front entrance for child drop-offs. This is especially prevalent when the lot space is tight, and if the location is in a retail center where circulation patterns differ versus a standalone building. The three parking spaces would be in addition to the one parking space per ten children requirement. This proposed change pertains to building signage for tenants with multiple facades that face public streets. The current ordinance allows, or requires, a tenant with multiple facades to split their total allowable signage on the multiple facades fronting a public road. That results in smaller signage on each facade if they choose to have signs on multiple facades. The proposed change would treat each facade as if it's on its own, allowing for larger signs on each facade that fronts a public street. There are several businesses located on corner lots that could either add to their existing signage or replace it with larger signage if this ordinance is approved. Examples are corner lots such as Chipotle, Capital One. Also, the businesses that back onto a secondary road, such as Town Center Boulevard, would be permitted to have signage on the backside without having to give up their allowable signage on their storefront. This is an example that shows the lease space width at fifty feet and the street-side building width at a hundred feet. Currently, these are added together, divided by two, to reach the allowable sign area, which can be distributed as they see fit, but not exceeding a one-to-one ratio, and the maximum of all aggregate signage would be three hundred square feet. The proposed is much more simple, allowing for a one-to-one ratio on each facade that's abutting a public road. The total will still not be allowed to exceed the aggregate three hundred square feet. In conclusion, this amendment will allow for more sign visibility by allowing signage for each building facade that fronts a public road. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of each of these text change amendments as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I had a question for you on number eleven. I thought I heard you say something about cooking structures, and it's not in the text here. So was, could you kind of go over that again?
The kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, so it will not allow for a kitchen facility in any of the accessory structures?
Not even in a pool?
Indoors, indoors.
Okay, so like in a pool cabana, it'd be okay?
Steve, you want to help me out here?
So the intent is to keep them from being an accessory residence, having a sub-residence, something that somebody can lease out in their backyard. So outdoor kitchens, things like that, absolutely. Anything that's going to be interior to the structure, creating kind of an apartment, if you will, that will not be permissible.
Okay, I just know a lot of people that have barbecue grills by their swimming pools that wouldn't do too well with that one. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Now, exterior, it would be allowed to be on the outside.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Matt, for all that. Appreciate the effort. On the carports, and I don't know how you would determine this, but I'll just ask the question. So with the setback allowances that you're requiring now or proposing, do you know how many homes would be eligible for carports?
I'm not sure. There are deed restrictions in various neighborhoods that would prevent carports from being built in certain neighborhoods, and I'm not sure of the latent demand for carports in general.
Do you know to what extent HOAs prohibit carports? I know I'm really putting you on the spot.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure. I know there are some HOAs that prohibit them, prohibit carports. About half of the city is in an HOA area, but I'm not sure they're restrictive covenants.
During the period of time that we had the twenty-foot setback requirement for carports, were there any complaints, the people that wanted to put in the carport but weren't allowed to by virtue of the application of the twenty-foot setback?
Well, I can remember for sure, for the Sherwood Park subdivision, I remember those coming through, and I'm sure we've had a few.
Of course, the larger concern in Sherwood was just there were so many of them already in existence.
Right.
But anyone outside of the Sherwood neighborhood that you can think of that applied and were declined? I don't mean to put you on the spot, Matt. I know I'm asking a lot of questions here.
Yeah, that's why I've got the expert.
In the past year, we have had one go to the Board of Appeals due to a denial for his carport, and just several that never got past the application process. They never chose to fight it, but they were not very pleased about the denial coming through my department.
Was the denial predicated upon the twenty-foot setback?
Yeah, they could not meet the setbacks.
And you think that was limited to several?
Well, based on a lot of the lots inside the city, there's no way for them to ever be able to meet that, not unless they chop their house in half and, you know, lose anywhere between five hundred thousand square foot of their own home. So if you're trying to reach that setback, this provides the option for a lot of people, whether or not they decide to take advantage of it is going to be up to them.
Sure, okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. So following up on Councilman Walker's question about the denials because of the twenty-foot setback, had the five-foot setback been in place, would those have been, would that have been sufficient for those to pass?
I am aware that the one that was in appeal, that they did appeal, that that would comply with the proposed ordinance.
It would have.
Because I was asked specifically about that a couple of days ago.
Okay, but five would have been, they would have been able to meet the five-foot?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Do you want me to?
Councilmember Carroll.
I just want to make sure that this is what they want to do. We got some pushback when we did our presentation.
Right. Yeah, we just, you know, if you guys, or if counsel would like to amend the proposal and strip carports out and treat them separately, we could act on it with two separate motions, but I'll leave that to you, Mayor.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. That's, so that goes to what my concern is, is I would propose that we strip out the carports. I am in favor of carports being its own section, like what has been proposed, for clarity, separating that from accessory, other accessory buildings, but I would propose that we keep the regulations for the carports as they currently sit and then move to approve everything else.
So what we can do is you can make a motion to approve item eleven with the exception that you would like to make, and then we can vote on that one individually.
Okay. Do I still have the floor?
Well, actually, not, we're not quite ready for the motion yet. There were no, there was no one signed up for the, for the public hearing, and so we're back to the council, so yes, you may now. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. So I move to approve item, this is number, what, eleven?
Eleven.
Well, I want to approve item number eleven. I want to close the public, I move to close the public hearing and approve item number eleven with...
Without the revisions for the carport regulations.
Without the revisions for the carport regulations.
He wants to separate them out, though, still.
But that would still be included because that's been proposed. Is that right?
That's it. He wants to separate them out, but include them as the current regulations.
Right. So...
Right, yeah, we're good. Okay.
But does that still?
Would you? Would you?
Bob, knowing what you're trying to accomplish, if he takes the exception, right, where you take the carports out, approves this ordinance tonight, if you still want to create the section just for carports, even though they have the existing regulations, you're still going to have to come back with another...
I've already created it.
You're ready, you're ready to go with another ordinance?
Ready to.
We anticipated this, so we worked...
Got it, okay. So, but the council will see the creation of that.
I've got copies.
Not tonight.
I've got copies.
So...
Apparently, I'm very predictable.
Yeah.
I think you're just clairvoyant.
Councilmember Carroll, would you please repeat your motion?
Yes, I move to approve, move to close the public hearing and move to approve item eleven. How'd you phrase it?
Without the revisions to the carport.
Without the revisions to the carport regulations.
Thank you, and seconded by Councilmember Walker. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem.
Just want to get a clarification. You're saying you just want to take it out of that being bundled here, right? Not strike out the language itself from the carport amendment that we're going to have, I guess, in the future?
Yeah, you're going to have another amendment that adjusts just the carports. Carports are going to be treated separately than the regular accessory building. We tried to anticipate that, but I know who I work for, and they said bring it back later, so we'll do that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mayor Protem.
I was going to ask him, any particular reason why you want to take it out? Any particular reason why you want to take it out of this?
I'd prefer not to have changes to the carport regulations. I think the restrictions on the carport regulations have served the city well, and at times when we have had certain neighborhoods that we have had to address for particular situations, we have addressed those separately, and I think that's the appropriate way to move forward with it. That's why.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, opposed? John, I'm sorry, Mr. Math.
This was the vote on the motion to approve item number eleven with the changes stated. That's correct.
John, Matthew Hill. There's a tie vote.
I will vote in favor.
The motion carries.
Okay, item number twelve is, let's see, any discussion on that? This is the offset parking requirements for kindergarten. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing for agenda item twelve and approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Carroll, all in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
All right, and item number thirteen is the item on the business zoning districts and the signage. Any discussion? Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve item number thirteen.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Nevels. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, item number fourteen and fifteen are going to be heard together. Mr. Steer.
Thank you. The next two amendments don't require a public hearing. I'll open these and present these together. First is to consider approval of text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter Six Business Regulations, Article Six, Fifteen Temporary Signs by amending Section Six, Fifteen, Six, provisions for temporary on-premise signs by amending Section Two Subsections A, Two, B, Two, and E by amending Section Three, reducing the setback from fifteen feet to ten feet, approving an ordinance for the same and authorizing the mayor's sign. The next is to consider approval of text change amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, City Departments, Article Three dash five Solid Waste, Recyclable Materials and Yard Trimming Program, Section Three, Five, Nine, Location for City Program Collection at Residential Properties to Distinguish the Collection Location and Container Removal Regulations for Residential Properties that receive pickup on the street side or alley side of the home. The first change is proposed to improve the visibility of temporary business real estate and subdivision identification signage. Where adjacent to a roadway, parking lots are required to have a fifteen-foot landscape area with a hedge row to screen the view of the headlights and cars. Unfortunately, this also screens the signage beyond fifteen feet. Similar to the change in monument sign location that was approved in 2014, staff's proposing to amend the temporary signs section of the Code of Ordinances to allow for the temporary business real estate and subdivision identification signage to be ten feet from the right-of-way. As with all other signage during permit review, staff will ensure they're located outside of the visibility triangle so as not to obstruct the vision of the motorists. The next change relates to solid waste and recycling. Staff regularly witnesses containers left in locations that create an obstruction with a hazard, and a hazard for passing vehicles. This amendment will reduce such obstructions and hazards and result in less visual clutter for the community. Currently, collection for solid waste, recyclable materials, yard trimming, and bulky waste are proposed curbside for residential properties. The occupants of these residential properties shall remove cans, carts, and materials not collected to behind the building line after sundown on the day the franchisee attempts to provide collection. What's proposed reflects the current practice for those lots that don't have an alley and actually have street-side pickup. Those that have street-side pickup would be required to remove cans, carts, and materials not collected from the curbside to behind the front building line after collection. The image on the left depicts where not to leave them, and the one on the right shows them moved behind the front yard building line. Those that have alley-side pickup would be required to remove them, remove the same items after collection to a location no closer than five feet from the edge of the alley pavement and place them in a manner that prevents them from rolling into the alley, spilling, or littering. The image on the left shows where not to leave them after the pickup, and the one to the right shows where to move them to. We have added definition for fence line and revised the definition for curbside, and in summary, the proposed amendments provide greater clarity in the collection location and container removal regulations than the current ordinance provides for residential property owners. Staff recommends approval of these two text change amendments as presented, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Steer? Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Matt, for your many presentations tonight. So just a quick clarification, I thought I heard you say it, but so you said that the containers would need... the containers would need to be moved behind the, let's hear, can you go back? So, the fence line and then the, was it the building line for, but it was sundown, correct?
Right, yeah, it's, it's after, after the collection.
So, after the collection, so sundown of the day of the collection, is that, did I hear that correctly?
I'm not absolutely sure if we had sundown in the revised ordinance or not.
Yeah, you have, I just, I want to make sure I understand when, when they're required to bring the, the receptacles back behind those, those indicated lines.
I'm sure they have to adjust that. It's 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, excellent. Is, is that, is that consistent with the language today? Is it supposed to be 7:00 PM, or is that new?
Correct, it's 7 to 7.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Matthew.
Yeah, thank you. I have a follow-up question. So, on Sunday, what time can we put the trash?
Oh, can't.
Monday is the trash day, but if I want to put my trash out on Sunday, what time can I do?
The day before the trash day, 7:00, 7 to 7:00. A lot of people start putting out at 6:00, which is fine. The problem that we have, not before the collection, it's after the collection. A lot of people are not taking their carts back.
Ah.
And this one, with a lot of our marketing materials will include the, the pictures that you saw, the graphs, so people have a clear, clear idea exactly where they need to move their trash back.
So, how are we going to enforce this, and what's the penalty if they don't follow this?
You know, as with all our code cases, we, we send a lot of courtesy notices first. First, we'll have an educational campaign where we'll send brashers to homes with graphs, and we use our social media and all, all our communication channels to let people know that we have changed in our ordinance, to let them know exactly what fence line means and what build line, building line means. So, we'll, we'll let them know with multiple communication channels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain motions for items 14 and 15. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item 14. Do I need to do them individually?
No.
Agenda items 14 and 15 as presented.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Walker. All in favor?
Walker, Carroll, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 16 is a consider award of RFQ number 193 Architectural Services Fire Station 5 to P Gal Incorporated Corporation, including architectural and engineering services related to the design, construction, documents, and administration in the amount of $875,000, and authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents. With us, we have Chief Tim Oates, Chief Oates.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. Thank you, sir, for reading that. I appreciate that, that'll save me a few minutes. I appreciate that a lot.
I, I've listened to you play golf before, so.
Yeah, you don't want to hear some of those words, do you? Yes, sir, thank you. So, some of this, I'm going to hit on a slide or two that you've seen two or three times, but since this is the first time where before the public, other than the public meeting, I've added a few slides, so you're going to have to bear with me. I'm going to take the Councilmember Carroll act, and I'm going to, got my cheat sheet, so here we go. So, starting here with the meeting dates, just to recap how we got here for this Architectural Services, the information here and on the next slide, you have seen several times and at the advertised public meeting, but I need to just take time to state it again. So, the Capel Fire Department originally hired the Emergency Services Consulting International, a third-party consulting firm, to evaluate our emergency services delivery, so our fire station locations in, in general for the entire city. So, at the time, we had the three fire stations back in 2017 when we began the study. They recommended Station 4, and Station 4 was constructed and opened in January of '21. They also, that original recommendation was to relocate Fire Station Number 1 to an area away from where it is now, over towards either Sanders Loop or off of South Belt Line. But, we had a year's worth of data with Station 4 being open, so we had the Emergency Services Consulting International come out and, and review before moving Fire Station 1, coming to you and saying, hey, we need to move Fire Station 1. We had them come back out and reevaluate our city. And so, through their studies, they determined that, I'm going to show you right quick, so with Station 4, the, the one on the left shows the little area straight up of Moore Road and that area as being detrimental as well in our meeting our response times and our, our miles driven. So, going through their analysis, call volume, response time, they determined the best solution would be to leave Fire Station 1 in place and add a Fire Station Number 5 at the proposed location at the, the star on the right, which is old Fire Station Number 2 and the art center. So, the map on the left shows that the fire department currently, at this time, meets, does not meet national standard of getting to all of the calls in the appropriate amount of time. Currently, we hit it 87% of the time. National Fire Protection Association recommends city fire departments meet the standard at least 90% of the time. With the addition of Fire Station Number 5 at the location shown by the star at 157 South Moore, the fire department will increase, will meet the standard 91% of the time. So, just moving, or adding that station will increase 4%. The addition of Fire Station 5 at this location would also contribute to the Insurance Services Office Class 1 rating that the city currently has right now, but this will further ensure that future ratings, we would maintain that Class 1 rating, which again, is a, a benefit. Homeowners in, homeowners receive maximum property protection classification for their homeowner's insurance, so. So, their homeowner premiums will be a little bit lower. So, again, Fire Chief Kevin Richardson briefed city council on, on these findings at the August 30th meeting of '22, at, at a city council meeting. And then, at that time, the city council members at that time instructed Chief Richardson to move forward with Fire Station 5 and then leave Fire Station Number 1 in place. The meeting dates that you see here, then Chief Richardson returned one more time to the council retreat that was just held in, at Life Safety Park back in January. And again, basically with the same information and the proposed location of 157 South Moore. At that time, the city council members requested public input, so a public meeting was planned and subsequently held at Austin Elementary on, in February 20, oh, there it is, February 25th, 2023. The city mailed flyers to all the residents within 800 feet of the site. There were 180 flyers sent. It was posted on the city's website, as well as all the social media outlets. Approximately 50 residents attended the informational meeting, only 34 signed in, so I'm, I'm thinking there was 50-ish there. Most attendees were residents when this station, when this location was a fire station, and they were all in support of its return. There were four or five residents, I, I know four for sure, and I thought there was another one or two, that did speak out in opposition for several reasons. Noise, traffic, and just general safety issues with their children, things like that. I'm paraphrasing, but that's pretty much what we recall they were, their issues were. So, noise, I'll go ahead and address those four, or three issues right quick. Noise, yes, it is a working fire station, and it will generate noise, just like Stations 1, or 2 and 3 that are pretty close to residential, but again, a fire station is a residence for these firefighters, and so they're typically not any louder than a, a normal residence. However, we do have certain things that we have to, well, like we stated earlier, our generator runs once a week for 10 minutes. The guys have to, the firefighters have to run their saws every morning, just to ensure they start running, they refuel them, things like that. The tones that you hear, the station alerting tones, that's obviously adds to some audibility. But again, a lot of that can be, with today's technology, we can turn off station speakers outside, we can do things like that to address their noise complaints and issues. We can possibly engineer a room inside the fire station where they can start the, the saws in a ventilated, noise attenuated room to where the saws wouldn't be heard outside, if that would be something that we would have to comply with. Again, Station 2 and 3 are across the street, I know it's a little bit further away from a, a neighborhood, but I don't think we've ever had a complaint, but I, so, anyway, you know, and possibly they were, they're worried about the fire trucks leaving at 2:00 in the morning, running lights and sirens. So, running lights and sirens is only done when we are asking for right-of-way, you know, for, for us to have the attention and the roadway. Typically, at 2:00 in the morning, they'll turn their lights on, but no sirens. It's not a guarantee, you know, if there are cars on the street, or if there's a lot of pedestrians walking, you know, we have to make sure they know we're coming, so we will use the, the sirens. But typically, in the evenings, only on the main thoroughfares, just to, just to, to give the proper warning that emergency vehicles are required to provide. So, that's noise, several of the residents were concerned with the traffic in the area, especially at drop-off and pickup times with the adjacent elementary school. So, really, our only concern would be school traffic blocking the departure ramp from the proposed fire station, because this school zone is no different than any other in the city. Fire Station 3 next door goes downtown center every day when, well, not, pretty close to every day during a drop-off or pickup for an emergency call. Station 1 goes through Pinkerton's or Wilson Elementary's. Station, or that's Station 1, Station 2 goes down MacArthur, so it goes through River Chase and, and Lakeside. So, it's nothing that we're not used to doing, and, and I know some of you may have gone over to the high school, we go, that is probably by far the worst one, and we manage that one on a regular basis, so. So, I think, I think we can handle it, as long as the parents at pickup and drop-off can just leave us a little room to get in and out. So, that's our concern, or that should take care of the concern with the traffic. I don't think there'd be any other drop-off or pickup areas for the issues from the fire department. The general safety concern from a, one of the residents at the public meeting was related to the number of small children in the area. Well, our firefighters are very good at their job. To drive the, the fire apparatus, they are required to attend equipment operator training and are certified in, in emergency vehicle operations. They drive hundreds of miles a year on the residential streets, they stop at the stop signs, they stop at the traffic signals if warranted, they slow down for school zones. I mean, if you watch them go through the, the school zones even during an emergency call, if the school zone is activated, they are at 20 miles per hour. They usually turn off their sirens, and they leave their lights on just to hopefully part ways, and then as soon as they hit the blinking yellow light where it stops, they turn them back on, and then they continue en route. So, again, I don't believe this is any different than any other residential portion of our city. I, I just, we do it every day. So, that concern, I think we can address with no problem. So, why are we here today? That concludes the part of the recap. This is why we're here today, it's for the, to award the Architectural Services Contract. And how did we do that? First, we developed the, the request for qualifications with the assistance of our city procurement office. The RFQ was posted on Bid Sync and advertised in the local newspaper, or the official newspaper for two weeks in a row. And then, we held a pre-bid meeting that was virtual and in-person with 11 firms in attendance. And the bids closed the following week with eight firms submitting the RFQ. A committee comprised of myself, Todd Borland, which is a captain with the, with the fire department, Mr. Steer, whom you might know, the Development Services Administrator, he was on the committee. We reviewed all the submittals, and then using the criteria of fire station design experience, the project understanding and approach, the local projects that they currently have and that they've done in the past, the past three years really is what we were interested in, because the design and technologies have changed so greatly, that was part of the RFQ to, to ensure that it's been a timely build. The firms' ability and their schedule to, to maintain, and then we did reference checks through the, all eight of them. We called the local fire departments that have used all eight of them and just visited with them. After all said and done, we asked two to come back to be interviewed. We brought two firms in for a personal in-person interview, and we held them for a couple hours just discussing everything that we could think of and any problems that we've had in the past construction, and just visited with them. Once the two firms were interviewed, PGAL was recommended as the Fire Station 5 Architectural Firm. So, with the addition of Fire Station 5 on land that is already owned by the city of Capel, and reallocating current resources, so moving firefighters and fire apparatus from other stations to this Fire Station 5, we think that that is the best, provides the best emergency services for our citizens. And that's what we would recommend, is to allow us to, to move forward with these services to, to begin the process of getting these folks started, and then come and meet in with city management, deciding how we're going to move forward with a contractor, which kind of form we're going to take, whether it be a customer, a construction manager at risk, or sealed bid, or any kind of services like that. So, we'll, we'll have that discussion, and then we'll be back before you once we have something that people can start estimating, you know, once, once we can get estimates and we start knowing how much this is going to run, we will, we'll be back in front of you. So, with that said, if approved tonight, the architect is here, he said that they'll be doing design, and we'll be done with design all the way through April of '24, and then, you know, construction would hopefully be able to begin, and before May of '24, but that's probably a pretty good little estimate. And then, it'll be 15 to 18-month construction time. So, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Chief. One question from me, does this include the, the quote phase for the construction? After the architect design, you have to get it quoted for construction, does it, does that fall into here somewhere?
They did not have estimate services provided, so we'll have to, as soon as they get through probably schematic, then we'll have to have a estimator. I mean, they have estimators that they can give us a, a really close number, but the, obviously, the, the main number, we'll have to have the contractor onboard to be able to get to all of their subs.
My real question was on schedule, that's baked into the schedule.
Yeah, so, that's, we're going to try to come before you, hopefully by October, November, with a. with awarding pre-construction services for a possible contractor. I would, again, I'm working on an RFQ at this time. As soon as we can get them hired, I can have them help me with an RFQ, and we'll meet with city manager's office and see which route we want to go, and then hopefully be before you to pick this schedule up and bring it a little bit closer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Chief? Councilmember John?
Thank you.
Mayor, approach him, John. Sorry.
I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just want to confirm, I know last time Chief Richardson had mentioned that having the new facility, you, just like you mentioned also, you're going to be moving some of the firefighters and apparatus to that location, and that's still the same, right? We're not looking to bring on additional staff?
That's correct. At this time, no additional staff, no new apparatus to fill in that station. We'll be basically moving four folks from Fire Station 3, which is, was designed for seven people, and there's 10 living there, so it's extremely overcrowded. Station 2, or Station 1, will be leaving, will be moving two folks from there, which has nine in it, and it was designed for seven. So we'll get those stations back to more accommodating for the firefighters that live there, but those folks and their apparatus will move to the new station.
Right, so we have sufficient personnel and apparatus to manage the five stations without bringing on additional, right?
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Thank you for your presentation tonight. Seeing no other, I will call on Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 16.
Seconded by Councilmember Hill. All in favor?
Walker, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. So item number 17 is our city manager report, project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session.
Thank you, Mayor. In summary from this work session this evening, we will be working on a design contract with the understanding of a potential new budget of up to $1.5 million. Design Option 2 is the selected design option, which actually goes towards this, I'll call it the Southern Lawn on the plaza. The Parks Board will be presented the update from the city council work session tonight. All of the city council and the Parks Board will be provided the Design Option 2 3D presentation, so that you'll all have an opportunity to see that. And the Parks Board will take a look and make any comments related to the parameters that they took a look at, and if there's any design alterations or things to consider for the architect. Then the contract will be, the design contract will be brought to the council at a meeting in the very near future, at which time we'll also discuss what the schedule looks like. So that is a summary of the action item from the work session on the Veterans Memorial. Moore Road Boardwalk, contractor continues to construct the drainage outfall. Once complete, they will place more beams, tread, and handrails on the boardwalk. The project is 75% complete. The Duck Pond Park improvements, contractor is working on the concrete channel north of the park. Wildlife, as we know, is a high concern for the city and the public, and we are researching various solutions to, for containment. A reminder that the park is closed to the public for the duration of the project. Thwait Park, construction mobilization began last week. The pond will be dewatered, and the park will be closed to the public for the duration of the project. Moore Road pavement repair, Moore Road traffic control mobilization is underway, if you've driven over there, by the school zone, and will continue until school starts. This is the Sandy Lake Moore Road project that's been ongoing in partnership with the Dallas County. The new area to stay away from is MacArthur at East Belt Line, because of the work that DART's doing. They are removing pavement and beginning the storm drain relocations for Phase 1. And then finally, the South Belt Line. The contractor continues installation of median irrigation and landscaping. The traffic signal work continues. Placing of the new controllers in service and striping will begin next week, or, excuse me, on Monday, to prepare for the opening of South Belt Line from southwestern to where the construction work will start at, I think it's Hackberry, right, as far as the intersection with 635. All that should be completed within, by the end of this month, the opening of the six lanes, except for the intersection. We are projecting a ribbon cutting for next Tuesday, the 18th. I'm saying that's a tentative date. We'll get you more information. Even after the road is open, there'll be times when the southbound inside lane is closed because they're still doing some work on the median and irrigation. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 18, the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. And in case anyone hasn't noticed, it is now officially budget season for the city of Capell, and our annual budget review process starts with you. City staff uses inputs from residents and businesses alike to inform proposed projects and programs as part of the annual budget process. The city council holds numerous public workshops in July, and all are encouraged to get involved, attend, and provide feedback, as budget workshops will be held here at Town Center in the second-floor conference room. Dates are as follows: We have our first one this next Thursday, July 13th, at 6:00 PM, and we will be discussing service organizations and our special revenue funds. Then on Tuesday, July 18th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be discussing general funds and the debt service fund. Then on Monday, July 24th, at 6:00 PM, they will be discussing the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund and the initial proposed budget. And then the final one is on Thursday, July 27th, at 6:00 PM for a final budget review. There will be further meetings after that, complying with the Texas state law for approving the budgets and all the rest of the stuff. Learn about the city of Capell budget and how to get involved at the capelltx.gov/budget. And if you have any budget-related questions or comments, email us at budgetinput@capelltx.gov. Item number 19, public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation. Anybody have any public service announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. There was no necessary action from the executive session, so there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 9:27 PM.